Good evening, everyone. We're going to go to start the meeting. Thank you for joining us here at the middle school. I appreciate everybody that's here attendance. Thank you for bringing your students out. If you have time out in your evening to join us. My name is Mark Flotis, I'm the president of the school board. We're here for a regular board meeting. But today is Wednesday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. We are here at the Taus Middle School. The time is approximately six fifteen P M. I would like to go to call this meeting to order. If you could please get a roll call.
Member Concha. Member King.
Here.
Secretary Topeo. Your Vice President Spray. Your President Flotis.
Here.
And the next item on the agenda is the President of the Meeting. It's a big old standard of not to drink too much. I'm going to need a few. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the great public for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. Next item on the agenda is our land acknowledgement statement. It is respectful to recognize the unique and enduring relationships that exist between indigenous people and their individual territories. They acknowledge that we are on the historic homeland of the Red Bull people within the original territory of Calico. This acknowledgement implies an reminder of our ongoing efforts to respectfully recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with the Red Bull people whose land and water we benefit from in this great town of Gabe. Item E of the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any proposed changes by board members?
I'd like to say.
So. I do have some recommended, uh, uh, little, uh, legend. Item. Our student reporter is unable to make it tonight. Uh, due to a work conflict, so I would like to table item F. And we do so, and I would also. Like to table item C of L one of the consent agenda. Should I get a second?
Bye.
Do you have a second? Can you get a roll call?
Member King.
Yes.
Secretary Topeo.
Yes.
Vice President Spray.
Yes.
President Flotis.
Yes. Okay, heading to directly to our presentation. Our first presentation of the night is our Taus Middle School presentation by Mrs. Linda Martinez.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Donna, Superintendent Montancon, and the board members, and all our parents and community members, thank you for joining us today. I first want to acknowledge Mrs. Jenny Romero and her family to be two spots. Then I'd like to start our presentation, then Mariachi, um, instructed by Mr. Roberto Martinez. Um, Nick Brant, and Mr. Brant. And Ms. Audrey Davis.
Alright, thank you. Welcome, everybody, while we get set up here with some music stands and stuff. Just want to say that this is Mariachi Los Seguiditos. They're from the Taus Middle School right here, they're the performing group. Um, and they consist of twelve students under the direction of myself, Roberto Martinez, along with Nick Brant and Audrey Davis. And, uh, quick, uh, I would like to announce everybody that's up here. We have Gabriel Garcia on guitar, Ronda, y Vela, and vocals. We also have on guitar, the guy that knows everything about New Mexico music and New Mexico roots. Found out that talking to him the other day, Isaiah Kitana, pues guitarón, and y vela. On the guitars, we have Natalia Tapoya Ariano, Savannah Serrano, Britney Orozco Conce. And, uh, she sings as well, and then we have Jacob Sanchez Lopez on guitar as well. Also on guitar, she's, uh, with the second period, but, uh, she's, uh, decided to promote her to the, to the varsity over here, and that's Camila Varela, should be playing guitar tonight. Then, uh, on violin and vocals, and played guitar on last year, he's playing some trumpet this year, Jerome Lucero. I thought you were doing well. We also have on violin section, Andrea Pernal Navarro. We have Zoe Pan playing violin as well. My Bonnie Ruelo in violin and vocals, and then Tiana Maddie Hudson in violin as well.
Three days, I've been feeling good. Three days, I'm crying for you. Three days, I've been in love, my heart is dead. Don't pass the key, I see a man, I'm too tired, I'm feeling. I said, three days, I don't care, I'm dead. Don't be, don't be sad, because I'm crying. Don't be, don't be sad, what are you doing? Three days, I don't care, what are you doing? Don't be sad, I'm crying, I'm crying. Ay, 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 ay. Ay, ay, ay. Ay, 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 my heart is crying. Ay, ay, ay. I don't know what to do, I'm scared, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna do it. Don't be, don't be sad, because I'm crying. Don't be, don't be sad, what are you doing? Three days, I don't care, what are you doing? Don't be sad, I'm crying, I'm crying. Ay, 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 ay. Ay, ay, ay. Ay, 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 my heart is crying. Ay, ay, ay. I don't know what to do, I'm scared, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna do it.
This will be our last number for tonight. Thank you for having us here. Linda, Anita, school board, thanks for having us here, superintendent. We're going to do a song called Flote las Flotes, very popular New Mexico song, goes like this.
Don't be sad, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Don't be sad, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was at your house and I didn't see you. I didn't see you, I didn't see you. I was at your house and I didn't see you. I didn't see you, I didn't see you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Don't be sad, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Portina, hold on, kids, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, Zach, you got it.
So I want to, I want to thank you students for the beautiful music and the great talent and, uh, the rich history that Mariachi, you know, has in, uh, for, uh, allowing us all to hear tonight. I want to thank your instructors, uh, Mr. Roberto Martinez, Mrs. Audrey Davis, Mr. Nick Brant. Uh, we have such a great Mariachi program and a lot of it, uh, started with Mr. Brant. It's Mr. Roberto Martinez and Audrey Davis, and, you know, without your guys' hard work and they're going to teach our students, uh, we would not have this beautiful music and you guys will carry this on for the rest of your life, I hope, and I wish you all the best. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, so let's Friday, this is what I promised that I was going to present last morning. Um, I said before, one of our, uh, one of our previous board meetings that, but this was first presented to us. I wasn't quite sure what I thought about it and how I was going to present our students and how I'm going to wrap our head around this new way of learning. Um, but for the last four weeks, it has, it has shown to me quite beneficial in many different ways. So I want to just go over, um, what the kids have to do with what they, when they go through during the day. Um, they have four sessions that they have to accomplish by the end of the day on, on Friday. Um, and we start in school with sessions one and two. So back in November, um, we, we came up, the teachers actually came up with, um, what classes they would like to teach for enrichment. So when they came up with that, their classes, we put it out to the students and the students started to hit what class they were most interested in. But we also gave them the opportunity to tell us what they wanted to learn. So even if they're, if the classes that they didn't, they didn't understand that the teachers wanted to teach, they have the opportunity to tell us what they were interested in. And from there, we took it back to our staff. And some of the classes that the staff wanted to teach weren't very popular, so they picked up one that the students wanted to. So from there, every single student got one of their choice or both of their choices. So they got two or four classes. They got what they picked. We didn't just give random classes to these kids. They got what they chose. Um, so on Fridays, they go to advisory for fifteen minutes, then they go to their session one class, um, for eighty-five minutes. Then they, after that, they go to session two for eighty-five minutes and back to advisory and then home. What are the next slide? So these are just a few of our classes and some pictures that I mean, take it throughout the week. This one is really special. It's called T M S Life Sapers. And it's put together, um, this spotted, and there's Benny are the ones that, that sponsored this class. And this class is here all around, um, healthcare careers. And it's far more interest in our view, very, uh, to get involved in healthcare. Um, students at the end of this, so this class is a little bit different than the other ones, who may actually like for the whole semester, not just one quarter. But at the end of it, um, they will be certified American Health Association Participators with their C P R, A D T, and first week responder certification. Um, so with that, we're partners so far, a bit of essential, chief, fire marshal, core, whole process, middle nurses, doctors, the anesthesia providers, and U N M, and now just recently they got together with the North Foundation, um, to get some, some additional funding and such applies. They need, not only this year, but hopefully continue to do this program on my part in the years to come. Um, Maria will go to the next speech.
Always for us, right? Always for us. Hold on, it's froze.
So the next one is for safety, and you guys have heard me say it over and over. This is my favorite class. Um, in this class, we have Ronald Lucas that comes in and actually gives the, gives the lessons to the kids. They all have online, um, their curriculum that they go through. They have assignments together. But he focuses, and this is in Mr. Romero's class, they focus on safety, the ethics of hunting, responsible hunting, and responsibility of the outdoors, um, even clearer than, than it was when we were, when we were caught there. Um, at the end of this seven weeks, our students will take a written and physical exam. And if they pass it, they do get, uh, country safety certified, allowing them to practice. And then these are just pictures of other classes. So we have pottery with Miss Autumn, and we have steam with Miss Gonzalez.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, go, go, we go back to that very first one.
This one, before.
So this picture is of our students taking up karate class with our Spanish teacher, uh, Miss versus Sandoval. So she's a black belt, right, or almost a black belt, right, so she's teaching them, and as you can see in that picture, they're, they're, they're learning. But others are astronomy, basketball, building vehicles, um, handling tests, computer programming, cooking, drama, acting, drawing, that dream makers, U N M, that is, that's the House Middle School, Life Sapers, the face of that. Um, Dungeons and Dragons, esports, field study, and history. Um, Vina Shaqin is teaching Arabic. Um, a fair class where in a couple of weeks, they're going to do an updo competition, and we get to go in and, and judge we updo. Um, country safety, karate, Mexican traditions and culture, Potter's wheel, that's the pottery class. So we, um, skating, we didn't get to do, but it was on the list, and steam, team building games, and more. Thank you, Maria. So the, the third session, well, I think let's talk about this open and watch it through.
Through the ring.
Students who have at least one S. At least one S, they can have five, but if they have one, they give up one of their enrichment classes that they have to do through. And in tutoring, uh, teachers either work individually, they put them in groups according to the assignments that they're missing, so they can you pick a group. Or they do, um, executive, but what's interesting are the numbers up there. So when the very first day of planning for, uh, next Friday was November first for us. And Monica Chuleta, our student, pulled a report to see how many students had S. And fifty, ten of our students had S, a hundred and seventy students. So that was on November first. So week one, uh, next Friday, we had thirty-nine percent of students who had S. That was the start, it was a school, you really don't expect too many S, but we had. Week two, forty-four percent, week three, forty-six percent, and last week, we went down to thirty-seven. And if we would have pulled the numbers, well, you pulled the numbers today, but it was early, full of Thursday afternoon, we were at thirty-two percent today. So this just shows that one of two things are, we're, their kids are really excited about the enrichment classes, and they don't want to be in tutoring. And there's just getting their act together finally after two thirty, but after three, nine, certain time, we get it together. But this is exciting to see that they're, they're bringing those grades up. Go ahead, Maria, please. So their third session is I Ready. So I Ready is a program that the district has adopted, um, part of our short cycle assessments. We take, we do the I Ready test at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and the end of the year. But it also has a component that, uh, personalizes instruction to each student dependent on where they score for each test. So the, they're working on forty-five minutes of timed tasks on their personalized lessons. So if you are eighth grader, but you are at a fourth grade level, then you are working at level to get proficient to get to eighth grade. So what we have students doing is working on forty, forty-five minutes on task. That number sixty-one, that shows that this student worked for sixty-one minutes of time on task, and they passed five lessons. So they submit that to myself, the eighth grader submitted to me, um, seventh graders to Miss Rodriguez, and the sixth graders to the search to that, and we do the case. We go in there and we put the grade for them in campus, as well as session one and two, and more. Um, so that's what the screenshot looks like when they get this done into a financial results. We'll head to session four. So session four is our F T L session, and this is also online. And both session three and session four, students can, um, they can access those since Tuesday at around noon. So there, there's no excuse for them not to get it done, because they can work by Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, and Friday after school. But, uh, Miss Tyndall, who's our S E M champion, she provides the rest of every week, and I just put it up into campus. So this is, this, these pictures that are up here is an example of what, um, what are the lessons looks like. And this was called True Colors, and what the kids have to do is answer questions according to, or they look at, they answer questions according to the, like, the prompt. Their, for their, that they have to, um, pick a number, like, one, two, four, does four, the something like me, three, some, what, not really like you, or not at all, or three, one. And then from there, where you see the grass, where you see the numbers, it gives them, like, what letter each, each one solves under. And then when you add them, the one that gives the highest number, that's your personality color. So then it gives them a description of this is what your personality is. And so that was kind of went to work with some of the kids to see, you know, because we would guess to, we'd go in and they'd.
That kids are, that kids are all.
No, it was some kind of, and even then, they were surprised, or they were friends, or they, oh, yeah, that's exactly what we think. Yeah, so that was good for them to recognize, say, that I am, and this is my bit. So the way these, these, uh, lessons were organized, whereas the very first week of next Friday, all the students did the survey. And they let, uh, Miss Tyndall know what they were interested in, who it seemed. So, so far, the topics have been values, self-awareness, emotional cup, um, and passion. So, um, again, students work on these assignments throughout the week, and then they submit it to us and we grade them, um, Friday, Friday. So. That's the, that's my first Friday, uh, my first Friday presentation, but the next part is our football field. So our football field is in this array. Um, there's a picture of it. I want to thank Mr. Gilroy, because Mr. Gilroy actually, um, put this part together for me. But it is, it is. It's not usable. We've, we've been told that kids cannot get on that field anymore. Um, there are so many prairie dogs, um, and the pieces that they leave through the tall and through the, through the, the spring are just, it's just so much. Um, but there's good news, because it's still, it's still salvageable. So eighty to ninety percent of the grass is still alive and healthy. Um, and we couldn't, there. David, you want to come help me with this? No?
She's asking me about it, then. I don't want to get in trouble with the superintendent. We talk, we talk prairie dogs as well. It is, it is a recurring theme. Sure.
Yeah, I already picked the first one.
Um, what I would just love to add is I would have students out there all the time, if they were safe and visible. We had students yesterday doing their last minute science project, doing accuracy. They were doing a correlation between hand size and accuracy. They're all football players. They've struggled for a month to figure out their project. They fell in love with the sports project, once I gave them that option. Uh, we went out, made sure it was safe on one end, tied a, uh, boogah to the goalpost, and they did, uh, trials, many trials to run their first round percentages, which drives their math curriculum. Sure, their math teacher were doing the help. When I go out there, you know, and we do that one activity, I see a whole field. When I go out there, you know, and we do that one activity, I see a whole field where we could have the lines again. Those are mathematical calculations. They have a hundred yards of percentage. I could take students out there ten days a year easily. That's part of my curriculum, meet standards and have them. They've done natural resource stuff like a data to high school. You know, to go outside, but I think you can use a field much easier than a wild garden area, especially for middle, middle school science. So that would be a hundred and twenty students ten times a year. That's just happened then. We had three, two field days in the fall for the seventh graders. As I said, the students that were working hard and had good grades at the end of each quarter. We're using the basketball court. There's a few questions about that too. But kind of sort of need to be able to have them out there for field days, integrate its own math science.
And I'm, we, we're not expecting or we're not asking for, for a new term. Well, actually, I could have it my way. Yes, we would have a new term. And I know that's not feasible right now. I know that a million dollars isn't feasible to put on, on this, on this field, but the fact that the life, the grass is alive and it is healthy and it just needs to be watered. I just want to put it in your ears again about getting those prairie dogs out and seeing what we can do to, to mitigate it and just make it a usable field again. I would hate to see it completely just dying because these, these testing little programs are.
And prior to COVID, you know, the building position and I mean, they extend all of fall and it heavily all screamed out at the point. When we came back and my, you know, I was in a position here, my last year teaching, we were getting to the point where we couldn't do activities on the field. We couldn't even do like kickball or baseball. I'd have to go and put cones everywhere because just to keep the kids safe. We couldn't even put bases the way bases should look because, you know, so eventually to stop using the program because it's just unsafe for them. So and then, then in those two years, when I've been here, compared to where it's at now, it's even worse.
Reclamations, is it because it was dormant those two years that the kids were?
There was a time when the, when the turf was being put on, at the high school. On the football, the high school football players didn't come and they used our, they used our field, but they worked hard and tires tirelessly, trying to fill the holes. They put dirt in them. They get pipe holes and the football players were stuffing them in there every single morning just so it was, it was useful. Now I see there's double the amount of holes that there is. And this picture is from August.
This is August. I was looking at the week.
And actually, our, we make the, the, yeah, the football team, they used to actually build their field. I no longer.
I think that they had, yeah, they had to go to the real softball field. That one's that right. They had, they were.
So have you researched? Because in regards to prairie dogs, I know so, they've taken over. And so we have to get to it now. Is there a service or someone that can eradicate?
President Flotis, if I may, President Flotis, members of the board, board member team. Actually, I would like to say that our facilities director, Mr. Motherbone, has already reached out to the extension office and is working with us out to help with this problem and situation that we have here. And I'd like to ask him if he would be able to speak on that.
Actually, yesterday, I, I was after this journey, it's been feeling good from, of Spanish. They looked at a problem, looked at this field, looked at the next two, it's ball field. Looked at areas around the spaceship, which are, and part of it, because those are the reverse areas that we have right here. This field they have been is, is, as far as that. They recommended that we take immediate action. I actually, I, I'm working with our finance director. And they actually want to come out and help us do this. They're going to come out and train us on how, you know, how to.
Well, well, we're not going to, you know, and I don't want to say, but. It's, it's not going to, we're not going to use any pesticides. Basically, what they do, what they recommend.
But it doesn't use chemicals. There's no. You cover the hole, it's level of the field, but the bigger issue that they saw was that it's more than just. So we're going to have to go out, like surrounding areas. If we don't do that, it's just going to come back. So it's bigger than, and you can see the baseball piles, all the area of crying, the variables, all of that areas. We're going to have to really go to some of that. But like I said, we're, I'm working with our finance director and I can get a, a check because they only get checks. And I can get the materials from them. They actually let out the, brought the materials down there. So we're hoping that I have this at the next. The more we pull, the better. So there's a lot.
I asked, I thought the next, I think I have one recite and there, that's, that's.
We walked that entire area and yes, it's. Without treating the entire area, this problem is just going to. That, that's where we're at with that. It is, it is salvageable, but we haven't salvaged. But if I have a couple of questions.
Hi. Well, the first question I have is answered. We have to sit for how far out around.
So these canisters are four dollars each. We're going to start off with two canisters. So it's going to cost us eight hundred dollars and a pair of service. This is going to probably be a pair of this area.
Those, those prairie dogs are pretty persistent. How do you know what you're saying?
Then it's going to be part of anything. It's, it'll be part of anything. It's just to, to stay on top of that. And the, the law will be there. But it's just based from this, these areas, maybe that literature from, from hanging out here. And the area of the lodges here, but I, in a apartment, you know, you see this big hole in these. They just stand, you know, and it's, we're not hiding anymore.
So it's effectively in the baseball field, right? Right now.
It's, it's in the baseball field. Yep. And it's actually moved into the.
You can drive by and see it. Yeah. It's dangerous.
It is. And they're starting.
Thank you for your questions. Well, I can support your guidance, process to get the ticket there. Definitely, you know, within the medium week, you know, this hinders the students from getting outside, outside and very helpless. Fresh air and moving router in the stretch and, you know, get them to, like, press the reset button and come back to the class. Definitely for me, I'm an outside person. I love getting outside and, you know, see, I play football, that show, but I think there's no standard. But I don't follow any, any prairie dogs that if they play baseball. It's important that the prairie dog population is growing up, for lack of better words. I think a lot of that is due to like urbanization, forced to come in to these barren areas and then the population. I don't think there's predators that normally would feed on them or less, like I know it's in the Burgess Craymont and so forth. So I, I want to test that, I, we get on, and I appreciate your progress. We also spent quite a bit of money on the new football tournament, and that was a long process. And we had people that were for and against, you know, it's going back route and. Anything with what can do to support me, when we're going to the process, which we've had a story. I definitely feel we're going to more likely find more than two mechanics there. And this is probably going to be, uh, bring all this process. Uh, because we've been asked to, you know, be popular with this and from.
These guys are really good and they're really helpful and they're really actually. They felt, they feel with me.
Wondering if maybe this is the, that idea to kind of getting touch with areas, businesses around the area. And that have property that they might want to do the same. And to look at their property and see if they have any, any growth issues. And that way you just target the whole. It isn't just this area, but the whole community part. You talk to the county and, and people that go. But even tractor, tractor supply and what other areas. Yeah, they could be physical church.
So the other area is the.
Again, the town would, I, I'm sure that they would be interested and so with the county. And again, all these other businesses, I think it needs to be bigger than just us. Because again, they could just spread out there and then come back. So if we target the whole area around that to me would be really better, the, the project.
Thank you, Senator. I think that's a great, a great comments there. Fortunately, the prairie dog, I'm not sure if this whole district can really go outside of our property, but I think it could probably reach out to the neighbors. And let them know, let them know personally, but eventually what will happen is you start, you start, they get to concern area. They get pushed out, it was another area, and then they'll start to breed in another area. Once we slack or back to bed, we work, they'll start to be back. You know, which was about a phase of human, I think it's just something we, it's a very bad management, like they're right up there with the care. I think it's very critical for our students and if we don't be careful now, there's also health issues that are involved with prairie dogs. A lot of other issues. So thank you for highlighting that. She had mentioned, I believe that we were going to be reaching out to the extension office. Thanks you all for your work and that. We look forward to seeing the progress she torches. We want to see if you can feel there. Good question. Is it, should that free first or? I think that would also help you, like, kind of water that field. Like, there's some damage there, and we kind of play, we get a field more than that has to turn off.
Thank you very much.
In your, in your bags is a candle from our candle making class in this Rial's class. The students may go free.
Thank you for having us in this meeting, this is your presentation, and let us know how you guys can support our new. All right. Thank you for the vision of the mission for the middle school. I think this is going to be done more than a year. We still want to go on for their work on tackling some problems. On my next presentation, coming from our Roydon, the North Alabama. Uh, it is for a second, a third day trip to the twenty stands. And it should be presented by Mr. Gilroy and Maya.
For having us in the company. I wanted to tell my question because I'm actually a part of the middle school group and I have to hear anyway. You've certainly come in half year to ask for this. We'd like to take our second and those graders on a field experience up to the sand dunes. And because we're crossing state lines in the Colorado, we have to seek permission from the school. Hopefully you receive a memo outlining the detail for this year. We would like to take them in May. On, right now, we're scheduled for May seventh, and we take them up there with the Royals about eight AM. When we get up there, we have a presentation with one of the educational rangers for the second graders. And then later that afternoon, the third graders get to have a presentation. There's some pictures here of past years and the students are all facing the sand because they are pretending to be camel cricket. Which dig quickly into the sand, hide from the feet. On the left, you can see also, it's down the bottom left corner, searching for bugs. So the, the third graders participate in an activity that looks at animal adaptations and learn more about animals that are specific to, especially insects that are specific to the sand. And then we end up usually getting back about five or five thirty. So this year we'll have the about nineteen third graders and about fifteen second graders. And we are able to do this thing to a point that has all been here wrote. And the Bus Community Foundation that helps pay for the bus transportation because it does cost well, like four hundred dollars, I think, with the bus, with the gas and the bus driver and everything. So we usually seek outside funding for that opportunity. But it happens, you know, to be one of the most memorable experiences for our students. There were some in the cooking crew actually that went with us, my first year as a second grade teacher about eight years ago. And they get to usually go two years in a row and I'm really excited. We're able to continue this post-COVID. And Maya was willing to come and see me a little. Yeah, last year was my first year at a Royals, as a second grade teacher. And it was, I was able to take my second graders with them up to the sand dunes. And it was probably one of the most memorable things that I've experienced as a teacher with my students. Most of our students haven't seen the great sand dunes and what it's like. And we learned exactly why. And we learned exactly why it was created, how it was created, and we're able to climb the sand dunes and play in the water. And dig in the dirt, like she said, and we got all the things that are there. And make connections with what we're teaching in our classroom to actually be in the environment. Um, it's one of those moments of like core memories that I feel like they're going to remember for the rest of their lives, and they're going to connect that. To this experience, um, my daughter was able to go with Liz when she was in third grade, and it, she still talks about it. We were in the party, she still talks about the land of the sand dunes and how she loved it and how, you know, it was probably the best movie ever gone on, so.
Again. How far is it to the sand dunes?
Um, mileage wise, I'm not sure exactly, but I know for, from a Royals, it's about a two hour bus ride.
A two hour?
Yeah.
How many chaperones?
Um, we usually have uh numerous parents that love to come with us, and so um. We will be, the teacher ride on the bus with the students, and then when we get up there, we have teacher or parents that help assist those with the words. Um, though we typically have, you know, three to four chaperones per class, if not more. Um, and you know, many of our parents actually have found us to be a trip that they like to take with their family outside of going. Um, and you know, it's such a rich natural environment for our students. Um, and there's also, you know, a cultural component, um, my understanding of that this was a sacred place for the. And that the noise could have been a part of this area or.
What we want with the presentation, uh, we do this.
Yes, so we have a process whenever we have a field trip. Um, that thankfully our cafeteria director, Tina, is wonderful in supporting us in. Um, so as long as we have our paperwork fired up in advance, then she's happy to provide sandwiches, so we provide sandwiches for the students. Um, so typically, when we get up there, um, it's usually about ten thirty or so, and so usually we'll go and do either one of the guided activities. Or we'll go out on the sand dunes and play, and then come back for lunch, and then kind of switch into another activity, and then. When other people goes out on the sand dunes, just the goal and the same.
So this is an action item for approval. Presentation.
So I remember before, I read the goal, it's the baby one, fully titled of third grade. Can it to the great sand dunes by the.
Will I get a pick a motion?
I entertain the motion that we uh. Rushing for the kids to count their belts with the name. Uh, with the answer, please.
Uh, we're planning to have a shake coming. We have to align all the stars, which includes the bus and the bus driver, but.
So we have to vote for approvals.
Member team?
Yes.
Secretary to heal, yes, Vice President's break.
Yes.
Welcome to the presentation and uh. You can.
And you're all very welcome to join us. You guys would like to get out.
Item three of presentation, which is town high school track and field. Agent Adewal nine, I mean, Chandler, Brody, Stack and Field, Indian Central. Got our athletic director, quote, there's on the topic, and quote, the burial of barrels today.
The evening for memory for this, everyone wants to commit on John. Uh, I'll be sending over to call the barrel, and let me explain a little bit more about traffic. Okay, uh, I'm the, pretty important, I'm the. This is called a CHS trap, um, and over the winter, we had a couple of athletes compete in indoor. Uh, tracksmen, very indoor tracks, they don't have a key. And through that, we had two athletes. Made required times for probably the largest trapping in the south west, if not the western part of the. Called the eighty third, ninety uh earlier classes. Uh, through this event, uh. They will have the opportunity to compete against the dead back inside. Uh, it'll be totally funded through parents, so they're non school. Uh, funding that required, I'm just seeking that the approval to transport my two athletes. Uh, it'll be not, we're gonna have college. Self there and compete, which is probably something I don't, I'm not sure we have to do that from house, so we just. So it's a, it's a pretty big deal, um, they met at the time, and seeking approval to transport them and. Have them take part in two ways, and one would be Friday, and one would be Saturday, and then they would come back. Back to town, so. Sooner we can get it done, like, and parents. But yeah, it's just a great opportunity to. The students, um, they champion and they run, so that's a large part of. Why they were selected and why they paid the violence.
What a great honor, uh, for them, if you don't mind sharing the name.
Uh, I did a Dafra, who's a tenth grader, uh, state champion cross country, and Billy O'Meara, who's a freshman, who will issue the state winner.
When was it?
March twenty, the actual event is twenty second and twenty third, the trapping, uh, which education will be the twenty first. So the twenty first and depending on flight schedule, get back on. Evening of the twenty third, uh. Creating, you know, time for flights, Sunday morning, and it will be the twenty fourth. So we back.
Question, comment, or what? This is uh, I don't know who's, depending what the person, the reputation. What an honor for these students and for the parents, uh, that are involved. Uh, for the late event, uh, oh, be honored to make the motion to approve, uh, the high school track and field. Here the board, two athletes mentioned participate will be the annual like the channel, both of that is going to be.
Member team?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Yes.
Vice President's break.
One.
That's what it was.
Yeah. We're developed, vice president.
I don't know, I'm sorry, you were. I've been wanting to. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Hey. Do they want me?
Hey. Yeah, so we're gonna move on forward, schedule and. We're gonna get a little. We started, uh, next on our uh. Presentation, we're gonna have a presentation on the capital outlet, the presentation from this year's legislative session.
President Flores, pretending what I want, so what's there's, good afternoon, good evening. Long thirty day session, it's unbelievable how, how things just continue to, to progress. This year, there was actually six hundred and fifty eight bills that were introduced for, for the thirty day session. Out of those seventy two have actually made it to the governor's presence. And so the governor has until, uh, March sixth signing. So the information that I'll be providing to the school board today, uh, some of it has been signed into legislation, I think there's a couple of those that have been signed, and some have not, depends on this point. Um, capital outlet bill, which is specifically some of the things that I think for the task of this good schools, uh, been signed at this point. Uh, all indications from the governor's staff, from his office. Part of their capital outlet, it's almost. That's always, that's always nice to have. Um, education proved to be a platform for debate in the thirty day session at the Mexico legislature. Conflicts about priorities, both control, funding, multilevels and case shares. Market vague is lawmaking delivered in that word of the definition of the toll booth. There's no ten twenty two billion dollar budget. The state assigned regulations, but they're the same law of the masses. I think there was a three percent increase uh in the budget that was proposed this year. Forty nine million for literacy, fourteen million for early uh literacy support. Fifty five millions for culturally relevant and bilingual materials. Sixty two million for two percent salaries increases, plus divorce. Forty three million to spend early childhood care, seven hundred and fifty thousand to support adult literacy, and two million for a business program. The legislature, the board, it's in the right thirteen departments for the first time in seventeen years. We will meet some requirements such as alphabet two. You have to test at a requirement that each student taken advanced placement common, build credit for distant learning path. Thanks for that, nobody will need them there. Despite conflicts and funding conflicts between the executive budget and the legislative finance committee, Governor Michelle Wuhan Bridgeman obtained thirty million of her request budget for literacy center. There was a lot of discussion about local controlling, a lot of bills that have dropped in terms of what we call dummy bills. So dummy bills are basically bills that are dropped so that we can see if we have any problem with that, and then we'll bring them in for the sixty day bill. If you have, uh, bipartisan shift, if the Democrats and Republicans, if they, if they seem to want that, or want to be forward with that. Then you'll see those goes to come back uh during the sixty days. The governor's the only one that can have a bill go up on the thirty day session. A lot of dummy bills out, uh, so we were looking at those bills, trying to see what, what's, uh. Bipartisan demand was for that, and we see how they're moving forward. Um, a Republican back budget amendment by Representative Gil Armstrong. That disallowed the Mexico public age patients firmance in funding any initiative that compels school districts cooperate. On a hundred and eighty day school day, paying the support of seventeen delegates during this session. This, so that was dropped in the dummy bill, which areas Republican and Democratic support on that bill. The amendment is including the final version of the budget that the governor was willing to give. There are also concerns for a bill that passed in twenty twenty three that increases the number of mandatory instruction hours per week. But allowing individuals to move mistakes to decide how to frank those dollars during the full year. And so that's another thing that's out there, and maybe the, the government said that the amendment was something she would look at carefully, while Wuhan Bridgeman did not offer a definite. Definitely answer about whether or not she had by night of weeks, where she said a hundred and eighty school days is something she's continuing to pursue. So we, we will see that bill coming back, we will see a limited force uh during the sixty day sessions. Another education proposal that aimed to address mandates for the Yabes Martina document, how bill number thirty nine also failed to move forward. It made it to two committees, and then that, that actually died. Um, the bill would be, with a filter capacity to build bilingual programming and certification programs at public colleges, universities, and trampas. Uh, all of it. Um, in addition to the governor's literacy center, thousands of children from first fifth grade, they have a chance to attend a sixth week literacy. Keep cabinet summer. It's a part of the governor's plan to teach literacy, rate instructor, literacy program. Division would then continue with a master school resource program. There are currently requests for proposals out under the, Senator Boater, um, maybe short from Albert, he said, we could start looking at that. Governor also received a request coming for adult literacy programs, uh, about seven hundred and fifty thousand or that. Career technical education and workforce development. During the session, members of the both of the House and the Senate committees committed and declared career technical education in high priority. So again, this is one of those bills that we've done. Everybody started talking about it, we had a couple of committee hearings on it, but now we have the Senate Education and House Education. Voting in favor saying yes, let's move this forward, so you'll see this coming back during the sixty day uh session. Lawmaker said that, well, there's a lot of work to be done, the legislature uh hopes to take an important first step to build a strong workforce in New Mexico. House Bill five also passed the legislature, which would create a workforce training and apprenticeship programs. It would appropriate about eight million dollars for the creation of funding support and create approved training programs. The new graduation requirements signed by Wuhan Bridge also allows electives in career technical education. So they're moving away and, and more into the technical fields, so that you can get some of your well-versed, you can get some of, you know, your workforce uh back in within what you needed. Um, as you guys know, uh, this is basically what we present in front of the legislature. Uh, to let it come to superintendent, outlining the priorities, and then those priorities, um, they're outlined by the test miss at school. We deliver this to the governor's office, to legislators that we're wanting to get support from. Uh, we're having a committee hearing, ended up any time you get back when some of the staff went up there, I was like, here, take this with you, take this with you, give it to the senator. He's got four or five of them, but we want to remind them and give that children a chance to, yeah. Uh, this year, happy to report one twenty five million dollars, we, the company, the three million dollars for the gymnasium. Uh, we also got initial three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for HVAC. Uh, so you guys need to look at what schools need that, and where you're going to put it, and you can change it some. And then I mentioned all fifty thousand dollars for. That's where we got the front door, and one in the, we were, um, fencing around, however, this guy. Actually, total of one hundred and ninety million dollars, that, and also send a report of it before they have a chance to look at that. Uh, thanks, sir, for any questions at the board, we have.
What are his questions, comments for Mr. Art Smitho?
Sir, thank you for your work, I. Very pleased to be to visit the legislature with you and uh kind of saw probably uh hair climbing and going on. And one, one quarter of the day, you're kind of down the representative and the senator, and really appreciate you for uh being my tour guide there. To take, take a family as president of the school district. Um, we're very privileged to have such a well-served individual, such as yourself, who is in the district, uh, they know is able to get out in the next picture and. Um, I just want to highlight, uh, for the board, and I'm sure they're very well known, but uh in working with, we've been able to bring a lot of money to the school district. Through working also with our, our senator and representatives, you know, and uh. We want to thank our senator, Roberto Badmas, and our representative, uh, Mrs. Ortiz, for all their support. He's uh leaving that, we asked him, and we gave a chance. I saw firsthand all the craziness of the legislature, it's uh, it's a madhouse at some point in time, and uh, I get, I go all sore. From the bottom, I eat, and then by leg, I got out of shape like this. It was a great experience, and I want to thank you for all.
Thank you guys for coming up. For the. Secretary to.
Nothing was mentioned on the maintenance, and I believe we spoke about it a few minutes before, um, before meeting started. Before did that, um, what is the situation with that maintenance? We could say, I think the governor, the governor had, uh, and PED had put out there that there was going to be mandatory maintenance for our schools.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, I, I don't know that until House Bill two signed by the governor, there's a lot of negotiating at the very end. And so, um, she has until March sixth to sign House Bill two.
Can I have House Bill two?
House Bill two, yes, that's where, that's the money, basically, any money that's going to be coming out, it's in House Bill two. And she has until March sixth to either sign it, might have vetoed it, or call a special session, go back and leave the house. So you can, I could send an email to the board as soon as I know the posters are, and how that's going to go.
And if not, can we, can we take him to the, to the, uh, other? And if not, can we, can we take him to the, to the uh, other session? This was the thirty day session?
Correct.
Into the sixteen day session?
Have their recommendations and the LFC will have their recommendations. So that's something that will happen this summer, throughout the summer, PB will present to the LFC. Uh, the LFC will make the analysis of their recommendations and then they will take that moving forward. There's always going to be money in the budget for maintenance. Uh, how much is in there is the issue. This year I know that the priority was uh, roads. Seven hundred and twenty million dollars was proposed for roads this year across the city of Mexico. So it really depends on what the LFC and the governor's priorities are. Some of the maintenance that we asked for and the superintendent and the president have asked for uh, throughout the years has been. You know, to do new roads, to do new stuff, uh, those kind of things on some of the buildings, some of the plumbing issues. We've gotten money for putting in the past for Inos Garcia, but I think it only covered half the project, that is my understanding. So where are we going to get the, the asking for that kind of maintenance, the actual uh. Thank you, that's the thing that we created again this year. Um, the governor's priority is sort of security this year, and she was pushing security. Uh, we were able to go back and push back and say, no, I mean, kids aren't comfortable in the classroom, the teachers aren't comfortable, then they're going to be outside. And then our security goes out the window case, even going to drive in by one of the schools and shoot into the crowd and doing any of those things. So we also talked about, you know, how we have to maintain our buildings in order to. Security throughout that, and for that we got three hundred and fifty thousand, that they were actually going to push into the security.
Um, and I, and, and the follow up on that is that, is that uh. I think one of those is, uh, well, there'll be like a six percent increase, excuse me. But that does not include maintenance. And that's why, to me.
The six per, the six percent increase is for salaries.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's for salary. For the maintenance, because it's just not, uh.
And as of this morning, that was down to sixty, sixty two point seven million, which is two percent.
It's two percent?
Yes.
So, uh, I appreciate your words, Mr. Dr. Leonard, and uh. But, you know, with the bonding options, can we use millivies in regards to uh. Of HVAC, if we, you know, as the kids sitting on, is that a source that we can use?
Now, I'm not sure what the, I don't, you know, the financial director, the property value, what your bonding capacity is, reference that. And then you would probably have to take that to vote for the public. That's part of the issue that's been a huge discussion. Um, and I know it's going to come up next year for sure, is they're wanting to get away from PB. There's a lot of legislators that aren't happy with PB, uh, of course, everybody has seen the test scores on, on statewide level, now we rank the other states. And they're wanting to go back to the old way of doing these, which was an election and appointment at school board, um, with the state level. Uh, so I think that's going to be the movement this next year. With that is going to be on some of these questions, because if you look at, um. You know, and I, I always just laugh at this as a county manager, but if you bring a million dollars of grocery receipts. Then the state would usually give you a million dollars and then that'll help you put whatever program together. Well, that's all well and good, but two million dollars nowadays, it doesn't go very far, right? But then you have a program like Outkirk's Public Schools. That brings grocery receipts in or whatever of sixty two million or a hundred and sixty two million, and then the state matches the hundred and sixty two million to them. Well, Outkirk's Public Schools doesn't need the maintenance and stuff that we need in the rural areas. And that's where PB has always been sort of backwards, you know, they'll tell you, well, yeah, we can fix your roof. But you're going to have to come up with ninety percent of the money. If we had ninety percent of the money, we wouldn't need your help, you know, we could just do it. We'd figure out how to do it, and that's what we're talking to legislators about, we're talking to the senator and representative and saying, that needs to be reversed. Because it doesn't make any sense for us to come up with ninety percent of the money that we don't have to fix a roof. PB should come up, or the state should come up with ninety percent of that money, we should come up with ten percent. And so that's a better way to believe in. Uh, and I think that's why the Tausman Municipal Schools is taking the approach way back when. Well, then let's just go after capital outlay to help build and fix some of our buildings or build our gymnasiums or do what we need.
And, um, I like that concept, because I, I really, really believe that, uh, the issue of PD has to be addressed. And, um, and again, I, um, would probably be on the cutting edge of something different. But even I have been since day one of me being on the board, I have looked at the S E G distribution. And they all, everyone that I have talked to for four years, going on five, if the system is broken. But, um, the legislative finance needs to look at it and let PD know that it's broken. And, uh, and it's for everyone's concern. We had an issue at, at our last board meeting and a cut of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That should have been something that we could have used and, um. And what authorizes PD to make that kind of a touch to, to our budgets? And, uh. And how, how was it executed? How, how our government executed, you grant you this money and then is there some kind of a positive that they can take it back? To me, I don't, I'm finance wise, I don't get it. And I believe that, uh, I would want to see a follow up on that to find out, and I don't know if, uh. If, uh, our interim superintendent looked into it, but to me, that is not acceptable. Not acceptable for PD to do that and not acceptable for us to just say it's okay for them to do that.
President, but it's classic Terry Tino, we did, um, reach out to our, um, finance assistant. Who was helping us last year build our budget and she'll actually be on and will be addressing that in my superintendent report.
Okay, thank you so much. Again, the, those are their concerns, so we have a support.
Hi, Steve. I do want to thank you for all you do, because I know exactly how much work it is and how frustrating. So thank you for everything.
I always, I always joke that it's the roundhouse, you can't ever corner it.
I don't know how you do it, but I'm glad you do it for us. Um, I noticed it didn't mention to have two one thirty seven and. I think that this board, we know that it requires more schoolwork and schoolwork training. And so I wanted to mention that that passed.
I, I, I think I did put that in. I put that in the.
My mistake.
Yes.
But I thought it was, um, a big call, I hope Bill had a lot of. One way, it's one, but I didn't know, I'm sorry.
Okay, I tried to cover it all.
Thank you for all your, we're so hard for, and for the right reading, thank you.
So, uh. Mr. Art, let you, we talked a little bit before the meeting, but uh, so I guess, uh, our board's going to have a retreat, uh, the ninth. I don't know if you can be available or will this talk to you, but the capital outlays, you know, I know it's ninety percent, but. See, we can definitely, you know, let's talk to the senator, how do we get that change? Because that's, you know, that's a lot of heavy.
Let me just clarify, so capital outlay is not on ninety percent. Okay, what the school board has done, what I'm, what I'm talking about ninety percent is maintenance of buildings to BD. And so I'm not exactly sure what the line item is, but you guys are basically going to BD and say, we want to put a new roof on. Taus Middle School, and they say, and our estimates are coming in at four point six million. Right now, the way this, excuse me. Correct, right now, the way it works is BD will say, that's fine, you guys come up with ninety percent, we'll put in ten percent. Uh, we, we won't be coming to you, like I said, if we had ninety percent of you, because we could figure out what to cut to, to do that. Uh, capital outlay is a new approach that we've done in a lot of school districts, and I'm not taking this approach. So that the school board, uh, members and presidents and superintendents, they're like, how do you guys get capital outlay? How, how is that affecting your, you know, your work with PD and those kind of things? Uh, this is a pro, an approach to where we go, build for infrastructure for the town schools. And so I'm, I go and lobby for that at, uh, the legislature. There's no repayment back on this, money that we get from them is a hundred percent yours, a hundred percent you use. And what we try to do in working with the superintendent and, you know, it's one of the one that I sat down and I was like, no, no, we've got to be broader, we've got to be broader. Because what you want to do is you want to furnish, you want to equip, you want to do all of those things if you can, when you build your structures. And so I try to phrase it in a, in a broad way that'll still pass through legislative council services and they're worried. So that when you guys come back, you know, if you say, we're going to put a million dollars into Inos Garcia. And when the emergency arises at Taus High School and you'd rather put the million there, it does, the rug up or not. You can't, because it says Inos Garcia, so now we just say Taus Municipal Schools. But there's no repayment on it, since a hundred percent yours and, and the money is, you spend it and utilize it. I did want to say, you guys aren't in this boat at all, um. Next year, they don't want more reauthorizations. So we have three years to spend the money that you have, so any money that we have not used in the past. Go back three years, make sure that we use all that money as we move forward before you use new money, because you have three years to move the money. So we got, uh, last year we got three million dollars for the gymnasium. Use that three million dollars first, which before you use this one point five, because the one point five, we have an extra year to actually utilize. But they're, they're really coming down on reauthorizations. That's Senator Munoz, not sure if that's going to pass through Legislative Finance Council, and the whole board has to vote on it, but him as the, uh. As the lead on the board, has basically stood up and said, next year, we're not doing reauthorizations. We'll see if that happens or not, just be cautious with that, and I know that the town schools isn't in that predicament at all, so we're, we're pretty healthy about that.
Personal part is, um. Do they do anything in the phases? Because a lot of times, when projects are really big, they usually ask you to, to maybe do projects in phases. And that way, you, you get money for phase one. And, uh, and then. When that's completed, you say, well, we still need money, you're looking at a whole big project, but it's, you can ask for maybe just a year's. Phase one, phase two, phase three, and that will get a, a something, because you don't want to, uh, just put a bandaid on, on something. You want something that is going to, to last, let's say, a, a root, a rooted project. That will last maybe twenty years, that's a viable of a move, or if not, um, hopefully a little more, but. But, uh, again, it, it, it wouldn't just, uh, do maybe one building or something. It'd be, let's, let's look at this whole big roofing system and say, well, if we have this. And phases, we know how much it's going to cost, but it's too big, we're going to go to the legislature, they say, no, we don't have that kind of money. But if we can phase it, is that possible?
It is possible, but we've got to be very, very careful. So let me, let me explain that. Uh, this year, in part of our, our capital outlay, we were asking for the number one priority was fire panels. Okay, so the estimate on the fire panels in all your schools is about seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million per school. Okay, um, had they given us a million dollars? We would have phased that into one school, but what they want to see is, well, how are you guys going to complete this? So now you're telling me that you have six schools, it's going to take you six years? So they're not going to, they're not going to phase it in that aspect, the gymnasium. We got three million dollars for the gymnasium, okay? This year we got one point five, that should pretty much complete, that's a base. Three million, start getting your construction costs, start getting your engineering costs, those kind of things. But I can tell you folks that if we go back next year, we say, you know what, we're five hundred thousand dollars short. The first thing they're going to ask is, did you spend any money? No, not yet, uh, you better start spending money, because we're not giving you any more.
That's right.
Uh, one of the, uh, one of the lobbyists that was up there, uh, was presenting in front of one of the senators and. And he said, what, you're already coming to do in addition to your, to your building, you haven't even built your building yet? And so it's, you got to be very careful how you ask those questions and which one for you. Our HVAC system is a base, okay? Uh, we figured, okay, there's one or two schools, maybe Retch's Elementary, maybe, you know, whatever other school there is out there. Uh, let's ask for this one, let's take it to rentals, and we'll safely completed that school. And then we can ask for more HVAC money next year, but we can identify a different school in order to do that, but you got to be very careful. The other thing, uh, is that the governor will line item veto, and if you look at her line item vetoes from last year. If somebody's asking for a million dollars and somebody gave him fifteen, she line item vetoes it, because it's not case. It's just, uh, it's just a token, basically, a fifty thousand dollars that was given towards that project. Somebody needs to give a half a million to eight hundred thousand in order for them to say, okay, now we can phase it in a two year project. Because your legislature might not be there in two years, so you can't say, we're going to do this in seven years, because you don't know that's going to happen. So that's why it's really that, you got to be very careful with that, and then you got to go back and present. The governor's office will call me and say, where's your RFPs, are you guys getting engineering reports? What are you guys doing? Because some of this money's coming from her office. She wants to know where that's at, and she doesn't want to have an open house or a ribbon cutting, when she's no longer the governor. And, you know, some level, she wants some of that credit back for whatever buildings, roads, bridges, interstates, whatever she does. Yeah, that'd be very good.
Thank you, thank you for that information, because I think that if we plan accordingly. I think we're, we're going to be very, very effective and, and, um. In having our projects complete and that, like, we can go and say, well, this is what we did, and we have, like you said, documentation that we did complete these phase. And, uh, and they will see that, uh, that we're fiscally responsible and good stewards of what the monies that they have. Given us, or they could have distributed someplace else, and we thank you that, uh, that if you'll help us with that. With, um, um, as we move along to, to do exactly that. For everything that we need for our schools, I think that would really, really be productive.
Any further comments, question? Proper question, the comments are, I give me a feel to thank the governor, and I want to make sure to thank the governor for her support and for saving. That money our way, along with our engineers. Um, also, I just wanted to briefly talk about the process for next legislative session. If we could very often extend the start and the discussion, and I wanted to ask you, um. When would be a good time to start bringing things forward to you? I do believe that, uh, the school district is going to still need to advocate or, uh, go actively money for fire panels. They've been speaking with me, um, they would just highlight to one school, if you could do that, a million dollars is a lot of money. Uh, but it's all hope we could be able to get that, um, and then. I, I think our priority, the fire panels stay the same, um, I'm not sure that we'll have. But in speaking with some of the board, we wanted to advocate and, and see how we can work and do, make sure to address about that. I'm not sure how that can be accomplished, regarding bringing money to the district so that, we would like to start to look at some of the land. And, uh, see what steps would be necessary to, uh, start that process and maybe, you know, secure some funds, we need to advance. Filter capital outlay in some form or fashion, um, I now check teacher housing is five ten million dollars.
It's something that we're actually already working on, um, so as. In full disclosure, everybody knows that I'm also a lobbyist for the town's house. Last year I was able to bring two point nine million dollars for affordable housing, and that's exactly who we want to target, is teachers. Uh, nurses, people that live and work within the, the community. Uh, so there's a subdivision that the town and town owns, and the governor gave us two point nine million dollars. Well, we're also at lobbying in, in leverage money, um, MFA, um, the finance authority. Uh, uh, fifteen million dollars, I guess. And so we're working through that process, the governor has just, uh, recently hired a housing guru. Uh, I have a meeting with him. Not next week, but the week after that, uh, because we're trying to figure out how we can leverage that money to bring in housing. So, uh, the meat on that right now is the town of Taus. Uh Tels County this year went after an additional two million dollars to build some housing right behind uh. The county complex, that land right behind there. Um the, that bill was Senate, uh Senator one seventy-nine, if you guys wanna look at it, it got uh picked out of the name. And so that bill will probably come back. Uh but that was to do some infrastructure work with that. Uh along with that, through the town, we're also, this year, we're able to bring a couple hundred thousand dollars for the surplus. Because you gotta build that infrastructure in order to support the houses, because you're not gonna be able to put them on segments. Uh especially within the city limits and areas too hipper. So we're working on that side of the project also. So it's already gotten some momentum. Uh I think that's a good idea that we partner with schools also, maybe some land. That the school may have, that we can get somebody to develop and then. You know, they could buy the land from the school or, or however that works. And then maybe give a discount to if a teacher within the school district buys that property, you know, closing costs or whatever. That's something that can definitely be discussed, but we need to actually revoke the governor's code on that. But we're already making progress on that. We brought uh three million dollars last year. And, and again, this is, this is where I tell you guys that if you ask for the money, we gotta spend it. We didn't spend it. We don't have no engineering. So when we went back this year and asked for another million, they said, no. So I had to refocus my shift and get the money that they were gonna give the town, uh pushed in a different direction. And so we did that. Uh but it's, it's really important that we follow through, so. I'll be meeting next Wednesday, actually, the uh city manager and mayor. And we're gonna talk about, one, spending that money. Two, priorities moving forward, and three, how we're gonna encircle that back to the store and then water. So we've got this water projects this year, we've got some sewer projects this year, uh the water building that I just built. And so that's all coming and it's not gonna be long with housing. This is all what we call affordable housing. So affordable housing is anywhere from about two hundred and eighty thousand to probably three sixty. Uh but there's special incentives in there to New Mexico Finance Authority, uh or special interest rates, those kind of things that, that they've been working. But it's, it's something that we're working on.
Uh out there in terms of, you know, our concern for uh affordable uh housing in particular for our teachers. What we're looking at. And then another thing that we had, the board had entertained a while back. I've been on the board eleven years now and. You know, all the things come from there at some point in time, you know, um. But when we talk about uh board member pay, and uh it's, it's governed by the next year. And uh I'm not trying to get myself hearing, but I'm not being paid for future board members. Uh there seems to be like a lack of, of interest for individuals to run for the school board. I'm very thankful that we have the board that we have and the people that uh sought the office. We get paid ninety-five dollars a day. And that is just to cover this immediate option. We've done, still you have board packets, we have, you know, weeks prior to the. Meeting, we're, we're meeting with the superintendent, or there's various work uh sessions, strength session that we go through. So it's, it's not just the, the meeting uh paid, but when you look at, you know, we are public, elected public officials. And uh when you see town council members and, and uh county commissioner, you know, get paid quite a large.
The salary?
A salary. Uh now I'm not trying to act, you know, the board.
Get a salary plus retirement.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you, uh being a school board member, I, it is probably what, just as tough a job as they're not. Um you know, we have a big constituency with parents, grandparents, the community, um. Uh working with faculty in schools and I just feel that the current. Pay rate for school board members across the state is, is uh very minimal and. I think it's to be honest with you. So it's a little bit. Unappreciated, unappreciated to be exact. And uh. How would we go about trying to introduce a bill to our senator representative to advocate? You know, please, more uh elected official paying across the state.
So what we can do is set up a meeting with uh. Uh Representative Ortiz sits on House uh Education. Dr. Erfer, sit down, uh and then we can talk to Senator Gonzalez, uh see if he would sign off on the bill. And then uh we can start getting support and that's part of my job when I do this. Uh we would actually meet with them, see if they're interested, see if they're willing to take that forward. Uh then when House Education and Senate Education meet throughout the year, they would basically bring that up. And ask the LFC, let's just say the Finance Council, that they need a meaningful to a favor's uh. Bill uh with the board. And then once, once that's all sort of outlined, basically find the old bill of how they, they get you guys to. Change it, send it up to the attorneys and let's say the council services write the bill and then we introduce the bill. So yeah, that's something that's very, that's something you'll talk about. And you know, get some ideas from you guys, some point you guys need to put their portion of that. And then maybe you guys can also start talking to your other board members across the state and say, hey, we're gonna start pushing for this. We, we got a sponsor, which is one of the senator or representative that I co-sponsored. Would your senator representative wanna sponsor or sit down and co-sponsor this bill? And that's basically how legislation is made, so yeah.
And so I would add, if I could speak to a couple of board members from some of our closer dis- closer districts. At our last conference about that uh. So I would have to speak to our other, to our myself board members that when we are at, you know, as a people that I can get a great initiative. Then many other board members from the state.
And get, get their name, put their name, phone number. So then that way we know, we call them, call their senator, call their representative. Cause if I walk into a business with Senator, uh Representative Ortiz or Senator Gonzalez and say. Here's the interest across the state on this bill, what do you think? Would you be willing to sponsor this for us? You know, more than likely, they see that there's people out there that are willing to do this and have their senators.
Well, thank you for having that, I guess, and the, 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 so when is the time to start uh? Getting everything to you for the next uh.
Anytime I'm on contract with you guys until uh June. And so anytime that you guys wanna do that, you can do that. I can come up for meetings if you like. Uh I try to attend uh Senate and House Education Committee meetings. So now what's gonna start is they'll start their rotation. I'll just try to attend the Legislative Finance Council. If I'm not able to be there in person, I, I do it by Zoom. Um and to try, try to figure out what bills are gonna be dropped this year, what's moving forward, what's not moving forward, what are they looking at? Uh that's done for a lot of the summer. Uh and then they have a pre-conference right around the summer timeframe, so yeah, it's. You know, that's just something I do on, on a weekly basis and try to follow that. They're taking a little hiatus right now, a little break. Uh shortly after, if the governor's not gonna call special session, uh probably mid-March and the middle of the new year. The other thing too is that if you guys, you know, can ever hope. Any ago, did they ever call me, I host, you know, I know the governor was down here uh last year. And I know you guys got to walk around with her and show her the buildings and those kind of things. Please try to highlight and make sure that activity plus that nobody got money for, but we did. Is sitting right in front of the, the school that she's visiting that day. So that she sees that, because that was, it wasn't actually this guy that was, you know, like, he said, we got that home. But nobody in the state of New Mexico got anything. Tels, this is about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand for that school bus. And it's because we got our reauthorization from other areas and one of the, we got a, it's really, the budget was just totally morbid. Uh those things are foreign to him. You know, take her out to the areas where the gymnasium's gonna be and show her the area where the gymnasium's. You know, and you have to stay down or you have to sleep. Or, you know, make sure she gets a copy of the engineering. But the bull's one, whenever she gets, those are things that are foreign when we come and visit. Also invite the senator, invite the representative, put the school board in. Uh that also helps them and helps us.
So you mentioned your contract, I think, you know, that we went out for R and P and solicited for to secure your services for everything.
None of my contracts belongs to uh June. July first to June thirty. And then at that point, we're deciding what to do.
I told you the most, the contract from my understanding, so hopefully they're looking at that. Uh it's been a great ask to the school district. And it's very tiresome, we are, we're on the streets and all of that, uh can we start lining up on cards and that, to the next, uh wait two seconds.
If you have any questions, please, don't hesitate to phone me, we'll be moving quickly. I'll always get back to you.
Uh-huh, within that hour, if you have any, I'll get back.
I just wanna tell you, I'm so happy because.
It is fun sometimes.
I think you are like that, like what we.
Well, the, the president and I, when he said that he was sore, but what happened was. Uh we were, then the last week, uh capital outlay, capital outlay was gonna be done that day and I wanted him to get in front of the senator and representatives. Because they see me all the time. And when they see you guys, it makes a big difference to them. You guys are the political leaders, you guys are the people from the community, the thing you want, you really see from me. They see me coming again and they're just like, ah, tired of seeing you already, you're out of here. Uh Mark was there and he uh, he actually went over to the representatives and they said, oh, she's on the floor. And I said, okay, so we gotta go three stories down, right? And we didn't have time to wait for the elves. We went three stories down, we went on the floor. When we got to the floor, they said, no, she just went to her office. So here we go, three stories back up to her office. And uh one of the secretaries is sitting there and she says, no, but she's on the floor. And I said, no, just speak from the floor. Actually sitting in her office. And he made it to go, we saw his office, right? So they were on some level covering for it. So Mark and I, we didn't know that, cause I'm not just gonna walk into the office in the back. So Mark and I walked out the, the door and her real secretary is now coming down the hallway. And she said, did you find her? And I said, no, wasn't she before? And they said, she was there. She wasn't there, she had the back row. She's in her office. She pulled us back in. I sat Mark in the bedroom for about fifteen minutes and he was like, really? He ran off and said, could you help us please and stuff? But yeah, we ran all over the, that, that place that they were just getting fifteen minutes for representing. We just wanted to do that one last push. Sometimes it becomes uh sporting, fun, uh see if I can get you some places.
Well, you know what's exciting though, is the excitement that, that it brings to the district when we're bringing in additional funds, you know, that's what it's about.
And you don't have to pay back, for yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
You, you sit down here and uh we can say good apples before to uh keep you in the working room and advocate for education and our.
Thank you guys for your support. Appreciate it.
So moving right along, we have a final presentation of the night. And a presentation on athletic and uh athletic budget presentation. We're our town's high school library representative, and I don't think it's about physical. Mr. Big Paul.
Do you want me to start off with that one first?
Or we can just go with the presentation.
Oh, you know, you can give us an extra for uh.
All the board, thank you for having me tonight. I'm really excited and um to talk about uh. The Tals Municipal Schools Librarians. And what we've been doing and what we've uh. What we, where we hope to go in the, in the future. I just, I've got six or seven slides here to discuss. First, I just wanted to set the stage by saying that. That, that there are innumerable studies and I don't wanna bombard it with too much information, but. Uh all sorts of studies showed that um. If schools have trained librarians, if they have. Uh well functioning libraries, there's a direct correlation between that and higher scores on different kinds of standardized testing. Um school libraries do make a difference uh in all kinds of classes. Um throughout the school and uh there's so much that librarians can bring. To the academic landscape in all kinds of schools. Now, so. And what I wanted to talk about is, is there is some go on funding in the state. For libraries. There's a couple of different committees, the New Mexico Library Association and then the. New Mexico Consortium of Academic Librarians, they work um to get it onto the ballot. Um each uh election cycle. Uh for there to be a bond measure about libraries. And throughout the state, it um passes rather convincingly. It has every election year and in twenty twenty-two, the, the stats were, I think, sixty-seven percent. To uh thirty-seven percent in favor of libraries in the American Spanish county. We had um the highest level of support of all the counties throughout of the state. Where it was seventy-eight percent to twenty-two percent. So in our community, people support libraries. Uh the roles uh that they have. And then on the next slide. We've been allotted um from uh the Public Education Department. All, all of the different kinds of libraries get uh. A cut of the, of the bond, the academic libraries, the public libraries, the. Tribal libraries and the school libraries as well. Uh get funds and um from twenty eighteen. Uh in twenty twenty and in twenty twenty-two. Those are um the amounts that we've got and. Um in the previous presentation, the gentleman was saying that if you don't use your funds, then it's hard to acquire them for the next. Uh funding cycle. So we've made a point of um. Of spending this money because of the pandemic um in twenty eighteen. Uh we just finished uh spending all of those funds uh last June by the end of the fiscal year. Each one of the schools, there's a, you know, Tanya might know more about that exactly how it is. The money is divvied up between the five schools. It's based on the student population. On the October tenth day, I think it is. That's the way uh the, the funds have been uh. Divvied up. Um. Unfortunately, we get those funds for libraries, but uh. Right now, I'm the only trained librarian that's still left. We have uh that Gantet. Is the EA at the Arroyos and she's great. And also Maria Lucero at the. In Río Garcia. But unfortunately, Jackie Graham, the other trained librarian left uh last year. So uh. I, I worked to get uh print book materials for, for each one of the different libraries. Finishing up the twenty eighteen funds. Uh last year and then with twenty twenty, um all about one thousand dollars of that amount has been. Been spent. And then we've got even more money coming down the pipe for twenty twenty-two and we've got until twenty twenty-five. Uh before we have to, to spend that. But I did wanna talk for a few minutes about what we've spent the money on. Um so far, we've been uh using it just to get um books. Um physical print books. There's all sorts of ways we could spend the money. And there's all kinds of electronic resources, databases, uh, electronic books, audio books. That are used today and I believe have a place, absolutely. Uh, as part of the educational landscape in schools, but that were some of the electronic resources, those require a librarian um, in the different sites to, for example, work with IT, um, cause you probably would have to push out an app to use. Some of the different uh, audible books, electronic books. Um, databases, somebody has to be in on the site to promote those materials. And unfortunately, since we haven't had librarians, but uh, it just have the focus has been to have physical materials and in the different sites. That's the route we're taking. But um, with that fund, um, and this comes from the Capital Outliers staff. I think it's uh, NMBBD, that's another part of the, uh, these are the things that are allowed and um, that the funds can be used to for. So books, of course, furniture, chairs, computers, scanners. Um, subscriptions, well, that's a fairly difficult thing to buy school. Well, that's a new for all of this, for book uh, subscriptions through a vendor called Junior Library, you know? And those are things that are unallowed. They say.
Um.
Yeah.
Well, I have one more. Um. Being that things have changed. I think libraries are changing. And um, and these children are, it's really hard for them to pick up a book and read. And I myself, it's, I have Kindle. And I have Audible. You'd be surprised the library I have in this, you know, that I have have access to.
Yes.
And then I can read it anywhere at any time. And it's, I I hardly have any book. In fact, I gave most of the books that I have and I'm 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 an advocate here. And uh, but it it would be interesting to see, like you said, you would probably need uh, someone that would be able to monitor, a a librarian of sorts, they can monitor on that. Kind of like Kindle.
Yes.
This will be kind of like a Kindle and Audible. In within our library, to where they can, it in fact now, um, I think that there is a mapping Kindle that you can just borrow the book. You you still pay a uh, you still pay a fee, but you can read the book and you don't have to bother. And uh, and so if they would just be, I think they would enjoy reading.
Yes, I I completely agree with you.
I don't know.
Those sorts of great sources and I I see it all the time. With um, some of the freshmen and sophomore classes, the younger ones. Uh, I work with the language arts teachers to bring the uh, students in to do independent reading. And I wrestle with that continually because it's very clear that it used to be that the book would be a uh, portal into new worlds, other kinds of information, data they have they haven't had access to before, but now absolutely the phone uh.
Or laptop or on the computers.
Yes, and the student is much more likely say that they're uh, dropping their younger sibling off um, somewhere they're waiting in a doctor's office, they're they're going to a game, they'll have their phone with them. Much more so than than a book and then would listen to a book. Um, and that's why I I certainly see the um, value in in such uh, electronic resources. Um, the reason we went towards the direction of the traditional process is just because as I was mentioning before, we would, you would need somebody on site there to uh, to promote that, um, to work with the teachers to make sure that the word is out, to work with IT to get uh, to get the materials used. But it it's very much uh, a reality of those who uh, and and continue to enjoy affection to uh, my Audible account and the Kindle are used, Libby, Libby and Sora are the apps too that are used uh, a lot. Now, yeah, and that's the direction I I'm um, I'm going in right now with uh, the funds that we have available at the library.
But I'd like to raise a comment though. Um, I hear, uh, fixation heal. Um, technology is amazing, but you hear so much advocacy that you get away from screen time though.
I know.
You know, it's it's, I think, I've seen it in my youngest daughter. In the, I don't know if you mentioned here, but I could spare photo of her sometimes, you know, or this kid that you should. So I found then technology has played, but also we're losing uh, you know, basic concept of reading, you know, the blowing of a book is.
Yes.
The smell of a book.
Yes. Um, and uh, with the books, it's it's nice to have many around, particularly in um, or in 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 the library space because uh, one of the purposes a library can serve is is um, that building is a a storehouse of of wisdom. And when kids come in and they see all the books on the shelves, it I I've I've seen it because uh, I have classes come in and do their work in the library and their uh, mood changes uh, when they are amidst all of the books. So um, even though there are certain sections of the library that don't get read as much, I still have those books on the shelves because it uh, creates an atmosphere of learning. Yes.
President Fordham.
Yes.
I hear you. I I heard a comment here uh, not too long ago about this smell of a paper, of a book. You know, and there's just something that just lends itself to holding a book. I experienced all of that and and I and I think it's it's wonderful and you're absolutely right. We need to get away from our from our, the phone, the phone, and that would be something that that uh, so don't get away from that. But again, the thought, the thought is there because it could evolve into that. It could evolve and uh, and I think we we could be open to that because that would um, be something that could be more productive than all the games that they have on their devices. And so where they could read something that is beneficial or resourceful.
I think it's, um, I tried to navigate up now sort of back between um, the two of of having uh, print resources, because there is something about holding a book and I thought a lot of those books that we um, have begun to purchase, they're starting to come in and it's so nice to look up and to get that smell and see those those books. Yeah.
It's a good experience.
And with uh, the the elementary schools, that's why it's hoping that we could get somebody in the elementary school libraries where uh, we we've gone in the direction of purchasing a lot of the early readers. Those series of books that help uh, students to read and certainly that age. The physical books uh, have uh, a great.
I think I have one more comment. And that is, I was able to find the the book, Second Jane for my grandson. I learned to read, I I learned to read that when I was in in first grade. And and I even, I remember even memorizing it. I I taught myself to read. And I think that, and so I found one that, I don't know if you remember, that's a book, Second Jane. And uh, so I bought that for my grandson, so I could read. So the other day I found, I found it in the library and I, you need to read this. Uh, we haven't really got that book. But again, it's just something that that just brings so many memories. I I remember that book. But uh, those old old books, did you read Second Jane?
Is it still in print?
Yes, it is still in print.
Wow. Maybe you can just, uh, we could, or it's less than a lot of. I just wanted to talk at the, with the next slide that comes up, it's um, gonna talk a little bit about what we do in the library or what a librarian can offer to uh, a school and to the classes. Like right now, I'm working with uh, I was besides the independent reading, of the students that come in and and check out books. And then I've worked out with the English class. A lot of my independent reading at the high school was from the uh, manga. Thirty-three percent of the, the use of it is from the series of manga books. There's many that come in uh, we certainly have a lot of novels too, but that comes through the the English class. But besides the checking and check out of those books, uh, I work with, right now I'm working with uh, Spanish and two um, social studies classes in uh, and doing research projects. In Spanish, the seal of my literacy is coming out. And as a librarian, there's a lot um, to work with the teachers uh, on there because there's certain techniques of searching online. That's one of those other librarian services, how to access all kinds of different information. And how to, in that case of the Spanish classes, limit ones searched in certain countries, whether it be Bolivia, Argentina, Chile and such, teaching that. How to find dark memories on the different topics that they're searching. Uh, to limit their searches by timeframe, all sorts of that. Those are the kinds of things that a librarian uh, can bring. And then with the social studies classes, uh, two of them are working on projects on capital commitment. So uh, uh, the state, New Mexico State Library provides many uh, databases to search on and that's what we can do uh, in there. Those are just a few things that a librarian can bring. And then the different elementary schools. They can uh, you you know, this gives teachers, I don't wanna say gives them a break, but you know, if you've got library class, that's another thing that uh, another specialist that's in the school that can help uh, relieve some of the pressure on the on the on the main classroom teacher. That was gonna be one of my asks there at the end uh, of the slides. Is uh, if if it's possible, you know, if we could were to have, and already there's a MEA at Arroyos de Norte and at Inos Garcia. But if we can try and get an aid in the library spaces in each one of uh, schools. And also um, like with uh, certain kind of specialist teachers, reading specialists. I think bandit, they they have uh, teachers that work in several schools. If we can somehow, I know it's difficult, but if you could somehow get um, another librarian uh, on board, a trained librarian. That that could really help a lot as well.
So, but it's, uh, I attended uh, a project that the Inos have for the children. And did you mention something about about the literacy? About emphasis on literacy pieces, literacy grants available or that could probably might be able to help with all of this or what is gonna be available, do you know?
President Fordham, Secretary Trufal, we're right now ending our our five-year C O D literacy program. Um, we're hopeful that the state applies to the federal government to extend it one more year. And then they're gonna go out looking for some additional funding, I think they're waiting for Congress to approve funding for um, structured literacy. So as soon as that comes out, that that is one of uh, my passions and I know our federal program's a director, she's also receiving literacy as well, so we will be applying for any grants that are available for literacy.
So this could be challenged, it could maybe be our library. Uh, concerned that our library.
I think they'll have the support. Correct. I I just wanna thank Mr. Paul for all of his work and making sure that our libraries are stocked and that we do have new books for our students because Inos and Arroyos do have a like, like the library program and students really enjoy going to those um, school sites and reading what the books that they do have available. We go into Inos, uh, Ms. Maria has a wonderful library setup. It's it's comfortable and inviting when she has books displayed and there's nothing other that I know. Ms. Uh, Dr. Monmonesana is working on her library at Rochester as well, so you know, work on the the next one also to see how we get that up and running, but you know, it it's it's helpful that Mr. Paul is there to purchase the books for the library so that we still have those available for our students. Thank you so much.
That's my pleasure. I really agree with libraries and what they have to offer to schools. Being a member of the community too. Um, there's so much a library can offer. Yeah, I another thing that we do at the high school is uh, it it does it's a space where students can come and just uh, we work on it being, well, we do have classes coming in, the classes coming in half the day. But the other part of the day, it offers a space that is not available in other parts of the school necessarily. At the high school, we're detached a little bit towards the back and uh, kids that are looking for a quiet place to be, uh, to study, uh, and and just to be. That's what we offer as well. It's a beautiful space in the high school that we got there.
Yeah, I have a question about vice president.
And it's actually, well, there was a question, but mostly my main comment was I got to tour the library and see all, if you're all, but it was the most lovely and it's it's well inside and and it does feel like a dog chew. It's just, and you keep it, I mean, everything. And you made me feel so welcome. I I really would recommend it for everyone to speak with them. It's such a mean nobody. And I wanted to know, did you ever, were you able to get that counter fixed in the back room?
Yes, yes, we did. But it was hurt. Uh, you mean in the one area that serves as kitchen?
Yeah.
Yes, that that has been fixed and I've um, uh, I've decided that I'm gonna take one of our tables from the floor and put it underneath it because something about that space propels people to want to sit
Yeah.
on that table. And we had these uh, uh, people who were doing the inventory the other day, the the adults they were in looking at some of the stuff. And they went in there and they they sat on that and I felt like I I I went in and told them.
Get the fly swatter.
Yeah.
I'm happy for you this time. Thanks to the father too and I'm gonna thank you again for how welcoming you like we are. I really enjoyed my time with you.
Oh, thank you so much. It's an interesting aspect of that space about how to manage it because we absolutely wanted to be a comfortable, relaxed place where students can study. But uh, where I also don't necessarily want it to turn into a lounge.
Right.
Which can happen and it's it it's it's a balancing act to make it through. So I'm really encouraged that um, that uh, you felt um.
Oh, thank you. A thousand reasons, a thousand reasons, very much so.
Well, the last thing I I did wanna say uh, Well, the last thing I, I did want to say about a librarian and what they can bring. Like with the funds that we have allotted us at the high school, those, I, I work with the different departments. I go to their collaborative meetings. I run surveys with students that they can fill out in terms of books that they are interested in, materials that they're interested in, what they would like. So that I could, that the purchases would be the most targeted and effective. With the funding that I've had for the, that we've used for the elementary schools and the middle school, the focus I've used is just infection materials from the southwest to make sure that all of the different groups in our community are represented. So. And I, also I, for the elementary schools to get the early reader books, the, the odd series, it's like based like Big and Jane of those natures. But, and, and I try to do the best that I can. But again, if you, if there's somebody in the school, if they can work with those teachers, they can really get a sense of what would be what it is. I, I'm able to get feedback from the, at, at the high school, from the different teachers. So that helps to make the appropriate choices. But again, I guess I'm asking if we can get somebody else on board, that would really be. I know, and it's talking, we were talking about housing before. About, I, I get, I know exactly what it's like to skip in or, you know.
But it's pretty much all. Are you able to kind of get out at the other school site and sort of libraries? When you have an opportunity and we have the curious story of you rely on information that remains to you.
Now, I pretty much have to rely on the information that's breathing to me. Five years ago, when we unfortunately had the the cyber attack this month, it was February of twenty nineteen. And a lot, a lot of data was, was lost. We had our own backups at the high school, but the other catalogs were sort of vulnerable and we lost. So there was a project that summer to repopulate, to re-scan in the titles from the other four libraries. So I did get a chance to spend a couple of weeks in the summer of twenty nineteen. And then each one of the different sites rebuilding their library catalogs. I'm the administrator for the catalog and software also. And then I can also run different statistical reports through that software to see what's going on in the libraries, what's being checked out in such catalog and software. So it's, it's possible to run all kinds of reports. I do have to get out to the different libraries. I did at the beginning of the school year just to distribute a lot of those books that came in. Because once they come in, I have, I import them into the catalog. And I've got boxes of books that are ready to go now. I know the maintenance guys can take them out there. They said they, they could, but I like to, I like to check in with the schools. I was hoping that Flex Friday would provide the opportunity to, to get out and do that a little bit more. But these first couple of weeks of the Flex Friday schedule, it's been busy in the library with different activities. So, but the classes that I made with now are mostly on Tuesday and Thursday up until the middle of March. So that provides time on Mondays and Wednesdays to get out. The problems pulls off. That could be.
But I would refer to as control round get puts on area or southwest or open. All, all that stuff is very important for our youth to lead. I want to thank you for that. On that, it's such a good, I appreciate you for the things that I, I take a lot of passion from you for what you do. And with like, let's have somebody passionately use seminar writing. Quick question first, for again, in regards to the need for additional librarians. Does the district have funding to fill those divisions? And if it's still, how can we use our disposal positions and workforce to try to act there?
So, President Perez, moving forward, what we're actually going to start tomorrow is looking at our staffing and take a look at our budgets, what our F P Vs are around the district. And potentially what helps you know, staff. It, it, I think what has worked out that to have them being in those positions just like it is has been hard to find anybody with a library M P that, that's a specific degree that is even in those positions. But we'll talk about it tomorrow regarding our staffing.
I do understand that, or I heard it. Difficult to get the library, I think, to tell it out basically by either librarian with the, the librarian, who's on the device and having, when we add out, we'd want to be done there. There's still searching, hopefully, but we will work to fill that need in support. Is there any other group that the board may be helping for their strategy?
The only thing I want to answer quickly is that there were, in the next month, couple of months during the high school and then when there's, there's changes, there's going to be interviews for to, to principals and such. And I was hoping that maybe just, if we could include a question, whoever is being for the positions about maybe what their views of libraries are. Because in the educational field, there are different philosophies about the role of libraries. And I was just hoping that with the, the candidates that were coming up, if that possibly could be something that we could evoke from that. Possibly so.
We'll get that done. So what, what kind of question do you want at that?
Well, what, what they believe the role of libraries are in education today. The role, as we were discussing earlier about the role of books, how they feel that librarians can help with accessing information, how the librarians should be collaborating with teachers. I, I could write up.
Okay, please send me an email.
Yes.
Send me an email regarding, had a couple of questions you'd like to be asked and I'll make sure that we get that out. Thank you, Mr. Paul, for your presentation. This is the first presentation I had on my term as a school member regarding libraries. And I'm really happy to be here now about it.
Yes, I'd like to make a point of coming more often if that's possible. And to also bring some of the other presentations earlier and talking to some of the other teachers at school to bring some of the students.
Well, there's, there's time for that. We'll work it out on our meeting schedule. But there's a lot of stuff we try to cover. You know, everything which is, is something, but we will make sure to include you in. And I, I give you, I raise your hand for what I was doing, I was always in all libraries. You know, with books there, not knowing where to start and, and, you know, taking out a book and, and it just, you know, it opens up your mind to a lot of new things. And so we welcome future presentations and updates on how we work. Okay, and then don't forget to send me that email.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Kevin.
Good luck, thank you for your work.
All right, got our next presenter, Mr. Hernando Chavitz, our athletic director. We have a presentation regarding athletics and fun, I think, a presentation to the board. And this is also somewhat of a first for, for the board to hear.
Yes.
I appreciate this, absolutely. We, President Perez, board members, I'm getting your phone once again. As you mentioned, I happen to be touching, touching on the athletic budget this evening. But I'd also just like to give people a confidence here, both of, or, or idea of what's going on in athletics right now. So first off, who we serve and how we start that. So this is the data, last year we had a hundred and thirty seven male participation athletic class. And a hundred and twenty female participants. We have a total of ten male sports teams and twelve female sports teams. Of course, there are participation requirements, enforcement, actions using the participation packet, on the sports, sports physical and completing the N V test, of course. Again, these are done annually and completed on rank one. Collect all of this people, so it saves us time. You don't have to have like people working in the rocks and everything. Touch on some of the benefits of athletics. First and foremost, I believe that it supports the academic process. I believe in education based athletics, I see it as an extension of the classroom. I think sports and encourage this physical fitness and also the social and emotional wellness. Some of the skills that I believe helps develop our teamwork, self-discipline, commitment, accountability, responsibility and resiliency. Again, there are a lot of skills that, that I believe are applicable to the real world. So whether they choose color or group, we got a high school, and some of these skills can immediately add when they step out of high school as a result of their participation, athletic teams. Really with the athletic, you know, to accomplish anything in the athletic department, it's done in collaboration with a number of other departments. Which transportation, I want to thank Dr. Vala, done an absolutely great job making sure that we have buses for all of our out of town trips. We have not had to reschedule or cancel one athletic event this year.
So you think of the topic that?
Yes, immediate, right? Yes, yes. So I, I will thank her for that. Of course, we work with facilities, so I'm opposed to with the local M P O and, and the district systems as well. The finance department, Tania, student nutrition, they help in providing after school snacks for a lot of athletic teams. Tech department, I'm always asking Maria for help with different things. She just recently helped us get N V S back up and running. So you watched the, the Boys and Girls basketball games. Recently, we're known that they were down, threw it down for a couple of months, but it's back up again thanks to Maria and her staff. And then of course, the human resources, the H R department as well, who takes the weight of ensuring that all our coaches are up to date on all our ice injuries and so forth. So I'm not going to, I, I unfortunately, this superintendent, when I go and mention this, really the, the gritty gritty of budgeting for, for me isn't going to happen until next week. I'll be meeting with finance director, Miss Tania Manestas at that time. And we'll be putting numbers to paper. But just to give you an idea of some of the items that are considered as I create the budget for next year. First and foremost, or by conventional first, that it's, it's, it's on program by program. For example, football, volleyball, you know, girls' basketball, I boys' cross country, girls' cross country. So it's on program by program. Also, I am required by the state in Mexico to supply the Title IX report. That's at the beginning of every school year, we can do that at the end of August. And so as I look through my budget, I also better make sure that I'm holding the spirit of I have on this.
For, for the board member?
Yes.
Someone for, for board that we came to you, elaborate on what Title IX is.
Yeah, so it's Title IX, basically means that we're not discriminating against and discriminating on basis of sex really is what it is, right? And so that if you have something, you're looking at, let's say, baseball and you're looking at softball, right? Sure that what we're offering for baseball, we're also offering for softball. That includes things like uniforms, access to facilities, all of that really. So for equipment, supplies, all of it is in, so we do our best to make sure that for all of the spirit of, of, and I, I think that would be a really good job. That was high school. So some of the items that I consider, that are considered during budgeting are equipment and materials, uniforms, entry fees, we have entry fees to a lot of the athletic events that we participate in. For example, the G L E for Boys and Girls Cross Country, track meets, so tournaments that we want to attend, wrestling meets. A number of our, of other athletic events or tournaments require an entry. Consider things like student travel, employee travel, professional development. Also, our designers, we have, of course, we prefer, for employees, athletic workers that will tap at the, at our sporting events, custodians, security, ticket sellers, concession workers, so forth. There's also a, 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 a side of that, we think like our Mexico Inter Association. We've got to pay both the, the middle school and high schools. It's also got to pay our district two, four agents. Many are school based members for the Mexico High School. Student Association, so that's paid annually as well. And that's really important that we, for a school based member because it gives, it allows our athletes to be recognized for such things with all security from their south. They're not a minimum. Especially a little bit more on, on uniforms, run a four year cycle. Surely there's about three or four programs, we do four moves and then get ready. I wish I had that in front of me right now, or in this past year. You have football, softball, baseball, and some of the other programs that definitely are on top of the game. This year, or the, behind the next year, I presume, you know, we'll be doing three or four programs and so on. Um, you know, I don't know if that, when you actually do get numbers to piece through it, you'd like to come back. I think I'm back to present on that and show you exactly, you know, how much we're budgeting for each of these programmatic needs. One thing that, that you would ask me also, remember though is you know, you might look at, at, at the bottom line number and see something like football and say, wow, this is thirty thousand dollars going to football. Yes, but it also costs a heck of a lot more to outfit a football team than it does of track. And I should say track, track actually requires, let's say, a cross country team, right? So from, from program to program, the cost of outfitting the team being be, be, you have one on one spectrum, one on another. But if you'd like to, I'd like to come back and go to, maybe in a little bit more on that. So out of, out of the athletic budget, we cover all the means that are essential to the sport. Use, we need baseball as an example, right? Sure that they got baseballs, sure that they got bats, make sure they got helmets. Make sure they got uniforms, right? Anything else extra, you know, they would have to fundraise through their activity account and purchase that on their, right? Any special training tools, um, tees, um, dimple balls, something like that, so. Anything essential to the sport, we would cover out of the athletic budget, outside of that, they have to fundraise for it. Uh, we do have a couple of, of supplemental activity accounts. Now with athletics, one is our concession stand. Uh, and, uh, well, we we do a pretty good job with, um, raising additional funds to our, to our high school athletic concession stand. But it also costs about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year to offer that concessions then. Uh, but I would say that we probably generate anywhere between fifteen to twenty thousand dollars rather than for some on a annual basis.
Yeah, number two.
Mister Chavez, is this just the high school?
This is just the high.
So no schools coming separate?
So I wouldn't say tired or sick, um, we work. We do work with the middle school, however, things like, for example, things like transportation. Um, that's one general budget for middle school and high school, things like uniforms, usually uniforms are passed down. To the middle school unless they're gonna fundraise for their own uniforms. I was the, uh, middle school athletic coordinator here for many years, we ran a pretty extensive concession stand out of here. Purchased the uniforms at that time for Boys and Girls Basketball Team or Volleyball Team, um, but those were all fundraised ones.
So, yeah, because my daughter was in eighth period this year, and we chatted at the soccer.
Correct, yes.
So, um, so that, I I can see the the difference, obviously, your philosophy, and I don't, I don't know if they had a concession.
I believe that they brought that back this year, I know.
They started, yeah.
Athletic coordinator of L R A L, and see that's working really hard to get that, get that moving.
Secretary Trillo.
Chairman, but also to the, um, interim superintendent, we were really, um, you mentioned that, um, there were some elements. That could have been allocated to be used, um, for different departments and the different churches. Could that be something that that could be used for the, for the athletics? That, um, now for the budgets, it kind of made them aware that there's money that could be used.
Hey. Secretary Trillo, I, I want to say with the money that we're allocating towards our our school sites, this is money that they have never had before. And it does support classroom teachers and their their instruction, um. Mister Chavez does have a healthy budget that keeps people to to draw funds from and any additional fundraising. Again, some other sources to, but with those school budgets, we'd like to.
Those were very specific to the teachers.
Yeah.
Should be classroom. Okay.
Um, and then just to touch on one other activity account, that's our poster account, that's the, uh. Count where we solicit for donations, so we went over to House High School, Terra Gymnasium, see some. No banners over some of our school sponsors, and again, these all aid in supplement athletics in in different ways, mostly through professional development. Um, transportation or, uh, summer camps, that was basically, um, it helps anyway, in that matter. Uh. Next, I want to touch on, on facilities, and some of it has already been mentioned by U P O, and I know, uh, Nida mentioned a little bit about the, uh. The football field and track here, um, some of this is safety-related, and other of it is, you know, just improving student, uh, the fan experience. Um, so first off, I'm very excited about the House High School rest room, that's gonna be completed here in the next, uh, next year or so. I'm very happy here that we secured the extra one and a half million so we can get the, uh, the building that we want, right? And I also want to mention that I'm very grateful to the Lord Foundation because, uh, they have, uh, they, you know, helped us in the. Seating grants, um, and getting monies donated that have helped us in a variety of ways, including weight room equipment last year. Um, improvements to the House High School Girls Basketball locker room, um, our House High School softball. Program just recently, that's gonna be on the board agenda for, for, uh, next board meeting, um. We're receiving a seventeen thousand dollar, um, grant from the North Foundation, that's gonna help with the concrete slab for the batting cage. We just purchased the brand new medication, we're waiting for that to be, um, completed, but it didn't include a concrete slab. It only included the cage itself. Uh, I think there was a donation to our House High School cheer team. For equipment, supplies, and tumbling glasses, um, of course, you know, like. We have needs in repairs, like, you know, as well in prior school district. Um, currently at Otero Gymnasium right now, we have a empty roof, that, that, uh. Not only the the main gym, but also the auxiliary gym. Um, I was happy here today that a weight room heater has been repaired. All our locker rooms are in in need of some renovations, that went to some Title One training about a week ago, we talked about. Uh, with, uh, with new construction, you really wanna be able to create private areas, private changing areas with our new locker rooms. That we can disrupt, um, and then just, you know, in general, taking advantage of our spaces. And then, uh, softball, baseball field, um, again, you could talk about that, touch on it, also the prairie dog holes, you have one young man. Tripped in a prairie dog, hold it, bring it, take it for a couple of days ago, so happy to hear that that's gonna be addressed. Um, the edging itself in the baseball field, um, we need some new padding, you place on the backstop. Um, the batting cage at the. The batting cage at, um, the baseball field, um, that needs to be replaced. Um, has some holes in it, it's kind of patched together right now, and then one thing that I would really like to see. Um, eventually, that we can brainstorm and talk about, is including parking situation for House High School baseball field. Um. When it was designed, I'm not sure why it wasn't designed, it's like the idea of more parking in mind. Um, but in either case, it is, there's ice and baseball games to place there, it is. For lack of better terms of training, I guess, there were ever medical emergency, I don't know about medical. Um, you could get in there, you know, in a timely fashion, because there's just rows and rows, car, back though, or felt one. On top of one another, um, one thought, one idea is there is that a lot right next to the town smoothes. It's an empty open lot, I don't know if there was a possibility that we could rent that lot, and you know, open up some additional parking so that we can avoid. Um, situation that we have, that we have right now. Uh, eventually, it'd be nice to see some, some restrooms at our. Um, both our baseball and softball field, they can maybe in combination together, right now, we're renting, um, porta potties. Every s- every spring for both our our baseball field and softball field, um. Which, yeah.
How about that park, is that open for a race count with football, uh?
It is, it is. Yeah, I mean, if we were gonna host a, if we were to host a state event, that's actually what we do, we have it from park up there. We run up through that, we can bring the ball all the way down to the, into the, uh. The football field down to the baseball field, um. Well, you know, we, yeah, I, right, all of that stuff, me personally, that's why I keep that because my grandfather, who knows to attend games. Um, I, it'd be really difficult for him to march from all, from high school football, but all the way down to, uh, to the baseball field, um. But, so, yeah, if, if we hosted a state event, oh, that's exactly what we would do.
And there's no restful, do you guys think porta potties?
Well, there's restrooms at the, uh. At the field house, at the football field.
Those are.
Only the nearest, only the nearest restrooms. They're clear across the football field on the other.
Or with.
Um, the softball field, um, it'd be nice to see some additional eaters, press box and concession stand, who don't exist at the softball field. Again, restrooms, and then at the softball field, our turf is probably nearing the end of its type as well. Probably about, considering year twelve now, and usually typically most, most of them, like seven, twelve, fifteen. Uh, and I feel these are more not necessarily, um, safety issues. Um, but again, to improve the fan experience, the marquee on our scoreboard, since that's. Scoreboard has been installed, that was prior to me being in this position, the marquee on has never, uh, has never worked.
He's a marketing.
So, so there's the scoreboard, then right on top is the marquee where you'd be able to, well. Share digital messages, you know, or or announcements, whatever it may be. Um, there's a play clock that, um, that, uh, Doctor Vala, when she was the athletic director, purchased. Um, I know that, uh, last year when we put in the new, uh, the track, we trenched it out so that, uh. Now we just need to run some electrical wires that we get the play clock up on that, on that side of the, on the field. Um, one thing we already need up are jump nets, so these are high jump mats and football mats, um, like if this was discussed. You know, sometime ago, that when we had major flood over at House High School, um, the, the. Mats were actually in the, uh, storage area, so they were that, picked back, um, and you know that there was a train training afterwards, that was, uh. Completed, but unfortunately, it wasn't covered, um, so, you know. They're, they're managing right now, but it's something that, you know, that we're, we're looking at placing as well. Um, and as, you know. Uh, superintendent, uh, one of the board mentioned, you know, yes, of course, there's. There's always, you know, when we compare things to other departments, you know, uh, our finances or like budget, maybe a period of, but there's always means, and there's never. Cover everything that's covered. Uh, middle school football field track, I don't even, I don't speak to that any further, um, because we've already spoke about that. I do want to touch on some coaches' requirements, um, just initial licensure requirements for coaches. In proof of the fundamental coaching, a background fingerprint check, and, uh, H B one twenty-eight, um, background check. Their annual requirements include, uh. Uh, completing a concussion course training, reporting abuse training, uh, bullying hazing training, and C P R and A D U training. And so, the reason I wanted to bring that up first is could be the. Four things, or or trainees that have only began or. Been required now for maybe only the last, about four or five years, concussion training, probably the oldest of it. The reporting abuse and bullying haze and C P R, we just recently added within the, uh, past two or three years. Um, so there's more that that's being required for coaches, and I want to touch a little bit on coaches' stipends, um. I've been a coach now in the district for seventeen, eighteen years now, um, and our coaching stipends follow a step process. Whether you're a, uh, head coach, assistant coach, or middle school coach, stipends and your years of experience are depending on. Um, there has not been an increase in stipend pay now, for, I would say, probably, in fifteen pointers, at least not to my knowledge. Um, in the time that that I've been a coach in this district, um.
Yes.
For the superintendent, uh, there's a district control that.
Um, actually, that's controlled under R C B. Uh, President Flores, actually, what we are working on is continuing working on negotiations with the Stevens. Um, the union has been overseeing those, I, um, or their, their eye is on it because we. Yeah, heavily because of, um, how Stevens have a little matter proportion, so, uh, right now, they're working on this.
Thank you. No, absolutely, I I just wanna, um, really speak to the work that, uh. That our coaches do, um, know they're, they're not instructional teachers, and by no means am I, am I, uh. Saying that, that, uh, that they're as important as a teacher in the classroom, but we also cannot undervalue. We can't undervalue the importance that they play in many of our students' lives. Or, I think you can speak to that, especially, or, uh, President Flores, uh. And so, again, you know, it's something to, I I know now that, I was told, um, that it wasn't C B A control, so that's what you know now, that that's the case of. Uh. Maybe, but to to maybe slowly start increasing their, their, uh, coaches' pay. Uh, they were tired recently, you know, we're, we're talking, we're talking, they get, you know, for example, they get paid only during their season night. Well, I would say ninety percent of our coaches on the summer program. Um, they're spending anywhere between four to six hours with their athletes during the summers, taking them to camps, doing different things. And all of that is going, basically, for free. Yes.
Number, number key that I played.
Do you have it? Mister Chavez, what, what is the breakdown? Let's just say, let's use football. So, the, obviously, the head coach gets that smile, what is the, what's the assistant, fifteen hundred, I mean.
But the most that a head of which can get, that he's maxed out at sixteen years, um, is sixty-five hundred, so the head football coach. Any head coach, it doesn't have to be football, any head coach with sixteen plus years' experience is gonna get sixty-five hundred. Um, for an assistant coach, it's three thousand dollars, I think, is the max, that's the max right there, um. And we got that claim, twenty years, where they, where they max out, um, middle school. Coaches, I I had the whole breakdown, you know, if you'd like, I can share it.
Yeah, even with, so the president, I'll send you, President Flores.
You can, you can take a look at that, uh.
Best, best per season, uh, year, uh, correct, yeah. I remember Cindy, vice president said, best per season, when he's talking to the system. So that's a year when he's saying, the guy's sixty-five hundred, but that's sixteen years' experience.
That's sixteen years' experience, so start a head coach at thirty-five hundred, I think, year one, no experience. You know, which is very rare, you're not gonna get, you're not gonna get a head coach at zero years' experience, they're gonna start at, you know, seven, eight years' experience, something along those lines. Uh. One other thing that, uh, you know, I eventually would maybe like to entertain is the idea of paying for student, uh, athletes' meals and for out-of-town trips. Uh, right now, it's dependent entirely on fundraising from each athletic program. There are some area schools or some schools in our district that do pay for meals and some that don't. Um, for example, Espinoza right now pays, uh, thirteen dollars, um, per student athlete for their out-of-town trips. Moriarty's at twelve dollars, and Los Alamos does not pay for meals, and neither does, uh, Quan. But it would be something that in the future, I would, you know, uh, li- like to take a look at again, I know what I was going to think when I was that meeting. Our meal was paid for, it was based on a, on, on certain distance, you know, you had to go forty-five miles, when the school was paying for me. Uh. And then the last, the last thing that, uh, just wanted to kind of put it on your radar, you know, hopefully get your, your blessing. Um, I'm interested in possibly creating a House Tiger Sports Hall of Fame, um, I see these in some other schools. Um, and so, I I think, one of the things that began this process, we first need to assemble a committee. Um, then determine what criteria and eligibility would look like, um, what the nomination process would be, and then where it could be housed. Um, you know, there's a number of, of schools in New Mexico that have a, a sports hall being at their high schools. And with that, standing for for questions. So, Vice President.
I had a question about the trainees. How long are those ones per year?
Yes.
And who sets those up?
So they are, they're competing through the N F H S, the, uh, network, that's the National Federation for High Schools, um. Yeah, so, so, I'm responsible, I'm responsible for ensuring that they completed those trainings, that they're updated on all of those trainings and so forth.
They need to go record.
Correct, yes. The date that they completed it, when we see their, uh, actually, yep.
Right, thank you, thank you. I think, um, President Flores, I think that, uh, the question was asked too, is this stipend above the salary, or is it just a stipend?
It's just a stipend, so you don't have to be a, you don't have to be a teacher or. Or employed in the school district to be a coach for our school district. Yeah, so if you were the teacher, yes, it's in addition to your teacher salary, yeah, it's not, that's not your, your own job or their own job.
Thank you. I have another question, another question, um, my grandson is in hockey. And we see that, uh, the hockey team that we have here in Taos is giving an outstanding job. And, uh, uh, I believe it was the, she's ten, or the CD, or it's, or U ten, it's a fox. They competed in, in, in Colorado at a tournament, and they did really well. And, uh, there was another game that, uh, in. And uh, there was another game that uh, in Albuquerque that the older kids. And again, they did really, really well. And uh, but they're not part of the school system. Um. And so is there any way that, that they can maybe kind of bridge the gap between? What goes on in, in these other sports?
Right.
To be, to include, be included? And uh, I know they can have their own uh, structure, but again. A lot of kids participate in, I, I was surprised at how many kids participate in hockey, and even in the swim club. And, and it's an amazing, they're amazing, what these children do.
Right, so it would have to be an initiative that would be taken on by the next activity association. Um, we do work somewhat with hockey in the, in the fact that, for example, Emily Mendez, who's a. Teacher at Taos High School, um, she spoke to a few hockey nights at some of her athletic events where she's trying to get um, kids registered. Uh, she also said, because they, they, they use the same academic requirements, uh, or they require the same. Academic uh, I guess requirements, right? Um, that we do, so I actually, I'll actually run all those reports for her and so forth, but no, there's no funding that, that comes out of. Taos High School or Taos Missus School that actually supports the, the hockey program, but. Yeah, it would be nice if it's one of those activities that the N M A decided to adopt when they.
That would be really, uh, just to expand, expand what goes on for the children.
Some, some that's gonna, that's actually on their horizon right now, it's flag football, um. Uh, female flag football is something that, that's a, it's a, it's an activity that probably gonna be introduced. To the stadium by school within the next couple of years. So there's always things that are, that are happening, I, I wouldn't doubt that, you know, because there are so many. Students who participate in hockey, I wouldn't doubt that that doesn't happen in, you know, the next five years or so, I couldn't say for certain, but it wouldn't be surprising.
Well, I think that, we were looking at uh, at ways to engage the kids. In, in our community and just happy, it's incredible that they have. You know, uh, you're looking forward, uh, the kids look forward to, I was just talking to uh. Um, actually someone today, and they said, well, our grandson has been in hockey, he did. Participate this last year and he's really, really interested. And so, and my, and my grandson looks forward to hockey, and he said, I think he's in the swim. Club too, and so he looks forward to these times, and he's just, he's just exerting this energy that these children have. But, like you said, I like what you brought out and what the coaches do in their team building. They learn to live and they learn to um, um, obey. Instruction, you know, a, a discipline, a discipline to commit, to be there, to. It, it's, it's incredible for these kids, and I see the, the structure that, that they have in, 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 in hockey and swimming. And that you all have here at the school, and thank you for that.
Thank you. It's important for them to be involved. So Vice President.
Um, on that day though, I just wanted to bring you up a point of information. Um, and our kids were in hockey. We took state nine times out of fourteen years that they played, and. It was incre- the kids, first of all, would always say, we used to learn our. Tigers, hockey, you know, the school hockey program, just because they all went to school.
Right.
They felt funny, that is a separate, but also just so you guys know, we took them to Kansas City, Nevada, Wyoming, all over, some of them. And they wore little ties and they represented Taos everywhere we went, and I was so proud of them because they were really. A little gentleman, actually as hockey players, they were gentlemen, they represented our town. And they, they really would have loved to have the junior schools.
Yeah, I, I, again, I think that would be, maybe that's something that's coming down the pipeline soon. But, you know, I'm hearing you talk about them going to Kansas and Texas.
Yeah.
As soon as you bring them into the N M A, it's a lot more difficult to be taking over Kansas and Texas.
That's fine, that was a challenge, this was, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. There's a lot more structure and rules now, once you.
We do that. But in some way, you should have, they just were always saying, well, what's the deal?
Hockey, it's uh, you know, our state is so big. It's the northern part, now we've got a great program.
We do, we only have ice three months a year, like we beat everyone that has a clear round and they hate us, which is, yeah.
But once you get, once you get Patrick sixty-six Albuquerque, it's just. Like our Salado is, it's anymore.
Trust me, Taos beat Albuquerque.
Oh no, Taos?
Yeah.
I lived in Wiremore, I see.
And they beat Santa Fe, and they have your girl.
Uh, they got a great team, up in, up in Colorado.
There you go, there's the hockey push from the hockey man.
Um.
Thank you.
I have a couple questions, and you kind of touched on uh, somewhat of areas, one of the things I would like to add to my question is. Um, in regards to those needs you outlined there, um, I know it's gonna be some work, um. You know, on top of all the work you've already had went on for yourself, uh, dogs. But were you able to, at some point in the time, uh, start to maybe put some numbers to some of these needs?
Sure.
Uh, you know, just as you stated then, uh, to the board, at some point later on. Uh, you know, this is gonna take some time, maybe midsummer or beginning of next four years, to create, uh. Some of these needs forward, uh, so that we can look and try to see how we can fund some of this stuff. Uh, seeing the needs, I, you know, being a former Taos exact. Uh, and having uh kids and these, the family members to participate in these programs. Uh, like they made aware of uh, about it, you know, being a board member, you know, you can't put a. Basketball game or, I think by myself sitting up at the top of the week, you're saying the way everybody, uh. I, 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 uh, uh. Thank you, uh, one of the things that I would mention, if you touched on that, I don't, just uh, tell me. Somebody mentioned the scoreboard and the softball game.
So, yeah, that was uh, that was prepared uh, um. Last spring, and so that's since then, you can, I do know that, I don't know if, if there are some of the. The lower money, that's on the softball division, who's gonna be youth sport. A scoreboard exactly, I have to go back and read, but I know at one time, that was something that they were approaching. Um, nor, or, but as it is right now, the softball game scoreboard is ready.
Right, right, thank you for that, I think it'd be very important for the board to see and complete, and then, you know, for you to work on the thousand just. Uh, needs, and then, you know, trying to get some codes, you know, and that, that takes time to, to. Put that together, however long it takes, it's very important that, that you have it and it gets passed on from, you know, one word to the next, and uh. It gets developed, uh, so we do kind of work on, uh, needing these, I would try to. Break them as safety, uh, safety priorities.
Yes.
Such as like the paddle and the jump mats, and some of that stuff, um. Also, uh, it was brought to my intention in regards to meals. Uh, or student athletes, we have a lot of student athletes that participate in sports, knowing that you need working. Or it's not about things, divide for the meal, um. Different chemistry. For, um. How much would it cost? Stipendments? Or is it now like, like ten dollars for students?
We can, we can take a look at that and again, we'll look at his budget and what the needs are. You know, one of the big issues that been, the transportation that we're trying to reduce is, but. We can take a look at how you can reach out the funding, which is my assessment.
This, this, that concern was brought to me by a parent that had no, uh. If you can pay for his title meal, but he brought it the, the term, or, you know, there are. For families, it's probably, you know, put on their, for their family, and then uh. You know, we set your kid with twenty dollars twice a week or something, this trade for meals is very. I mean, that's imagine sometime you were going on tournaments, big day tournaments, you know, like. People always treat the hotel that provides a continental breakfast, but then the four meals that uh, they'll be responsible for. Paying for, um. It's been about fifteen years since they, they asked, since the school district paid for, um. For meals, so this isn't something recent, but I remember reading, thinking about it fifteen years ago, you know, it's, it become the pay to play in the championship that we follow. Not, not in public. Well, I, I remember, my, my mother struggled, you know, we can't forgive you on a lot of, you know, tonight, but it's, it's sports, it's something where. You know, going on a baby or, or a bicycle or bicyclist, I think that's what we look at. In regards to being a Taos Tiger Sports Hall of Fame, um. I think that's a great initiative, and I don't know what, what, how the board thinks about that, um. Uh, you know, I think something very to look into that, you know, and, you know, um, to start to. See where it would came or where it would fund, and focus some ideas, and that, it's a, the board has a good education, right, education, kind of, this network. And uh, I think we reach out, uh, with the superintendent, and uh. From the coaches and then from the school side, and then out to the center area, maybe over the bulk of the board, uh. Those are, we, we kind of report you about that.
Yes, I like the idea, just a, a comment. Um, on the uh, food and the glory foundation, as you promised, um. The Taos Community Foundation is a, is a nonprofit that distributes money to the community. And I think we should let them know the needs of the athletic department, there's a lot of people in Bloom here who. That has needs, and they're not gonna go with it, I think you know, when you go win, leave, there's no hurts. There's no U-Haul behind the hurts, and, and. So, let these people, let them know your needs, because there's a lot of generous people here. That literally sit there and they would love to write a check, and they feel good when they give. So, I, I don't think we're asking, you know, the school board has body, has its resources, but the Taos Community Foundation. Try them out, see if they can, uh, you know, the football team's a start, basketball team, let them know all the things, just what you alluded to. And they have a new Mrs. Grace. So Superintendent, excuse me, the, uh. Uh, in regards to executive director, so she knows the needs of the school, so we, let's go over there, we're ready to, uh. Um. Just mark, uh, and I'm just like, she's at Walmart buying snacks, I say go over there and talk to them right now, because. You don't have to explain yourself anymore, they know the needs, they need it writing, so they can cover theirselves, just like we do here. And let them know, hey, these people, they have millions, millions. That interest bearing, that they can say, okay, we can't give you all of it, but we can give you stuff. Yeah.
Well, thank you. I think Mrs. Lovella uh gave a presentation at the last, at our last board meeting about. A grant that focus on, on meals for children, for kids. Would that they be covered if they're in the athletic? Uh.
So they could request meals from the cafeteria. And they could have those done for them, as long as we have like two weeks notice. As far as the grants and snacks, that kind of doesn't work unless they did an educational piece, but that's really easy for the coaches to do. But, uh, uh, Nando and I could get together and we could actually look and see a little further and see what we could do with that. Um, the only thing with that, sometimes, I mean, being athletic director prior. Is sometimes kids don't wanna eat the sandwiches or something, not that the meals aren't good, but you know, they wanna go out and eat, because some don't get to experience that. But we can definitely work on that, and with the plant scrap, maybe there's a way we can look and see. Maybe uh, we, we might be able to work on that and see if there's a way to, to look at this.
At, at the grants versus the snacks, these kids, I mean, after playing the game, or they're hungry. They don't wanna snack, they want a meal.
Yep.
So maybe, please look at.
Sure, we can look at it, we can work on it together.
If it don't work, if I may. Um, and just, if you do this and carry on with the conversation, I think, um. Something that we've encouraged the district to start doing is looking at all of our funding sources. And how can you create a, use different budgets? So, you know, in my mind, if I hear a law or grant coming towards the district. Or maybe something that, um, our S B nine funds support. I, I think it's important for all of us to have those conversations at the table, to say, well, maybe we can't pay for. Um, our, our students through this, but we can pay for these other things and free up some other money somewhere else, or. You know, you can use the grant funding for this specific item, um, S B nine does cover a lot of our facilities and maintenance, but. You just need, we need to work together as a group to, to hear what our budget needs are, and that, that's what was important about. Everybody coming to the table and bringing it to all of our directors to say. Here's what our needs look like at each school site and, and each department, so that we can talk about that. And look at all of our different funding sources, because Title One can be for different types of, of funds, we have rural low income, uh, funds, but. If not everybody's at the table, then you wouldn't know about that, so it's. It's important that when we do meet with our directors on Friday, we can say, here's what is needed, and we can look at all of those funding sources.
Thank you, Meg, if you could just, for the, the, I'm trying to go first, and then I have this two last questions. I'm gonna try a couple of them, one, uh, if you could elaborate, uh, very clearly and briefly, you know, like the topics. Um, how can we evaluate our athletic programs? And in the same sense, how can we evaluate our coaches? Uh, in regards to, uh, trying to. Improve their performance and, and the program performance, so uh. There is a, an evaluation tool that we use at the end of each season, so uh, after two weeks. Once the, the two weeks after the season is completed, instead of meeting with me. Quite to be there and something for, um, to highlight. Some things that they, they probably accomplished, some areas they wanna improve, um, their letterman, some of their, the award winners. Um, any special award, all state or south, these types of things, they put all that in the next season report. And then period of that time, if they present that team, we go through the evaluation process with them. Um, which, you know, specific team that I use, if you'd like, I can send you a copy of this, let you people look at it, um. There's a list of probably, you know, forty to fifty items on it.
Okay.
I'll create them, off one through four on, um, and then section comments, there's a lot of dialogue that we're backing for myself and those coaches. You know, not very specific areas that I'd like to see them improve on, uh. In, that's what the process is like, as far as the assistant coaches, the head coach will evaluate the assistant coaches. And be prior to me, literally, they have, they may. They got a very, very valuation of their assist, their sign, um, valuation for their assistant coaches, and, you know, oftentimes. There might be some discussion about what's going on with some of their assistant coaches and so forth, but that's a. It's really the, the cycle that we follow, then of course, you know, I try and. Uh, informally answer coaches as often as possible, like often practices, you know. Um, I'm gonna watch, you see how beautiful, you know, trying to make it important to, to do that just two or three times a week. You know, drop in various tasks and so forth. And then the last part of the question, question that we, like that, um, so honestly, being a player. You know, there's always the questions that's got enough time, or if you're posting things in the app, then there's always parents that are never happy. And some are extremely happy. Do we involve parents in regards to, not in that, in process, but do we ever send out like, uh. Surveys that are, you know, uh, where, where you have to sign the name on them?
Right, anonymous.
Anonymous, yeah.
We, we, we could do something with that, um.
I know it's difficult to, you know, as a coach, I mean, you're always gonna have a parent, everything your kid does, or your. Coaching, you're not happy with coaching, so maybe, like, you might have a school like that.
No, we, we have not, not that I'm aware of, but it's something that we develop, um.
There's something you guys could look at.
It is something that we can look at, it is something that I am a bit. That's it. Athletes and sports, and so, there is also.
I think you look like that.
It, it could, it could, and I don't think it's always fair, in, in, you know, I can see it, especially from a coach's perspective. You know, and, and I can see it from a parent's perspective as well, you know, uh. The way I, I express it to my parents, sometimes really, our parent meetings that we have is, you know. I don't know what exactly your position is at, at, at the, at the Taos House, I don't know what it entails. Um, and I'm certainly not qualified to evaluate yous. You know, because I don't, I don't understand that, you know, I think it's on there sometimes. You know, because I don't, I don't understand that, you know, I think it's on there sometimes, you know. I shouldn't say not my parents, because the parents have that, they should have that ability to be able to. Communicate with coaches, I'm thinking more, I'm thinking broadening that community. Get a lot of, you know, the, sometimes there's a lot of uh, uh, negative reactions and emotions. Moving towards both of them, which I think is totally unfair. Um, if we did something like that, I think you would have to be very specific parents and and not open it up to just.
So yeah, that's what you have to do. Parents, what about players, you guys have a resource? And for players anonymous.
Not anonymously, no, uh, I would say though that for the most part, all of our coaching were really good job of of meeting with players. And developing relationships and, you know, asking for ways to improve. We have a speaking only as basketball coach, but we have a lot of practices that we use. So that they had opportunity to evaluate us as coaches, evaluate themselves as athletes, evaluate ourselves as a team, and so forth. Those are very honest conversations that we have, it takes a while to rebuild those relationships.
Just just my perspective, and I've been a parent of of of. Your leader and a basketball player, and I think it's important that, I think it is important to hear your parent's uh. Respect and, you know, maybe obviously you're gonna get uh. I think it's important to just hear them in their perspective and also hear the athlete's perspective also. Um, maybe not utilize that on evaluation of folks, but in the way you think. Improve, right, important. So that's something that I would like to encourage.
You think it works on? I'm I'm sure that there's.
Grab your head around that.
There's probably, I would imagine that there's probably other districts that that we need such a tool. So it probably wouldn't be that difficult to define, you know, um, maybe look around, look around, then kind of pick and choose. You know, what would the. Yeah. Best, I do, I do. What best serve our our district better than this.
Yeah, I think it is important, you're gonna have those high level of care, I don't get enough time for this or that, you know, there's probably always a need to learn. I think that's very important, um, keep a look at that. I think it's important for the players to have a voice and also for the parents to have a voice, but then you know, like you say, you know. How do you do like that? The effect. But with that said, I want to thank you for your presentation, it was, you know, good to hear uh, something that I just wanna know real quick. There's not known drivers, the former Taos Tiger athletes, the local now senior and you're serving the district on your phone. Coach your own kids. And I want to thank you for your service. Very special. Very well. With your massive, we appreciate that. I think we can do anything to help you uh, to see and help our program succeed down the bar. So we'll just uh, for the sake of time, be forward and see you another time.
Very good.
All right, the next item on the agenda is our public comment. We'll begin your article, your public comment, Mr. Hall. Not this time. All right.
Thank you.
We'll say some time for you the next. Uh, anybody on Zoom, uh, like to speak of public comment? Raise your hand if so. Okay, moving right along, uh, what I really enjoy is hearing the district update, we have a item. I won superintendent report, uh, this is the president of the project.
President Flores, for supporters, uh, administrators and. I would like to first address, uh, Secretary Trujillo had asked for me to take a look at um. Last board meeting was to see uh, about that two hundred thousand dollar decrease, but that we have been sending before the board. I do have care of the board on who helps balance the budget for the for the twenty three, twenty four school year, so children. Many of the dollars are new.
I am, um, good evening, everybody, thank you for um, asking me to come back um, and speak to you. Um, good evening, President Flores, Vice President Spray, Secretary Trujillo, um, Board Member King. So um, I went ahead and I'm gonna go over uh. I'm hoping I can share my screens, so if I can, um, what I wanna do is I wanna start out with um. Basically, how the budget process works and more specifically with the federal grants. Because um, the bar that is you are referencing from last uh, month was. Twenty four, three thirty, which is the ESsers, one of the final ESsers of grants. And it's getting to the end of the the money and so there's uh, where the um. Reconciliation comes into place, et cetera. And so I'm gonna go ahead and see about sharing my screens, see if it works. And let's see. Can you guys see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I first wanted to start out with, um, this is um, all of your budget for the twenty three, twenty four school year. And just so you know, in grand total, you have sixty one million that's budgeted. Um, I counted all the funds, you have over sixty funds that are um, utilized on a day to day basis and are um, budgeted for. And so um, I hear you guys talking right now tonight about how you're starting the budget process early, which is great. Because um, it really takes a lot of time and effort to get all of these sixty budgets put into the system. And one of the concerns is if you don't get your budgets put into the system by the time your budget is due. You have to wait for an award letter to come. In the past, just so you know, PED last year was giving us award letters all the way up into the end of May and beginning of June. And so what that could mean is if you initially didn't get your budgets put in. You had no authority to spend for the whole year. So the biggest um, thing that uh, that needs to be known is. If you have a budget in this current year and any of these funds, you have to. Um, you don't have to, but my recommendation is you should um, make sure that you have something budgeted for the next year. Because again, this is your one time to get your budget started and moving forward for the new um, fiscal year. So the fund we were talking about is twenty four, three thirty, which is down here. It's the ARP ESsers. And when we start building budgets in March, April, May, and let's say our budget's not due till the end of May. And I think that's when um, Taos's budget was due last year. But we started um, building the budgets, probably like right now in March, February, March as well. You have to try and guess what exactly is gonna be left over of the budget. In order to budget an amount that you need. And in this case, um, twenty four, three thirty is a three year grant. Um, it's it's not technically three years, it's twenty, they're twenty seven months, so it's two years and three months. And what that does is it rolls from year to year the balances. And so you're trying to guess how much you're gonna spend in the first year at June thirtieth. How many invoices are gonna come in, do you receive all the products before June thirtieth? Um, and that can be tricky because you're still purchasing and you're doing a lot of things all the way till the very end. And in the case of last year, um, like I said, a lot of carryover wasn't coming in until almost the very end. This year, this is unusual, this is almost back to where we were back in the late. Um, I would say not late eighties, probably in the early nineties, late nineties. Where we were getting carryover notices in December and January. But then they implemented O B M S, it was supposed to create all this um. Um, electronic, it was gonna be easier and then it actually didn't, it went, it went the other way. So what happened, and let me go to this next area, here's the decrease bar, the two hundred and sixty thousand. One eighty seven that you have to take out. But I'm gonna go ahead and show you exhibit C. And this is basically what it looks like for the whole state. And we get a letter that says, hey, this is everybody's allocations. And let me scroll over to this other side, we'll start over here. And you'll look at. These are the amounts, and if you look at APS here, they have to reduce their budget by thirty three thousand, thirty three million, three seventy four. And the reason for that is it's it's not PED taking money away from them. It's that this is a reconciling item. And so basically, what it's doing is it's saying this is what their budget was, this is what was um. Total award, this is what was approved, was two oh four, these were the expenditures. They've over budgeted by thirty three million, so they've gotta reduce. And so same thing with Taos, that's what happened with Taos. We over projected and we did it for a reason, we didn't know what was gonna be coming in. We didn't know where we were gonna be. And where this becomes really critical is in this next fiscal year. So this is the last full year of the grant. And so um, if we look at it right here, let's see. We're this area right here, the four million fifty four, six forty three. So if we, let me see if I can highlight it, no, it's not gonna let me. So if we look at that and we come across. So we had four million fifty four, six forty three. Um, that was budgeted. The initial budget for the last two years was this seven million, six forty five, eight oh five. And when we subtract out this three million, five ninety one that was actually spent as of June thirtieth. We've over budgeted by that two hundred and sixty thousand. And so now what they're doing is they're asking us to true it up so that we can close out the year and get our budgets done. Now where I say this is critical is right at this moment. Let me see if I can, if this stayed open, right at this moment. We are still, this is what an R F R looks like, let me start at the top. You put in the school. And then you put in how much year to date expenditures are. And so then, this is where it does the math and it does its calculations. Now this amount, the difference between that and the other um. Allocation, this isn't gonna exactly equal that four million that we were talking about. Because what I noticed in the system is the two hundred and sixty thousand is. They didn't include the initial calculation for the first couple of months that the district spent their money. And there's a little bit of a difference. But the district knows all the time pretty much what's going on. Because if you look down here, it shows here was the award, here's what's been paid to date. Here's the outstanding claims, here's the balance available. And then here's the maximum allocation and that has to do with it. Uh, the warrant that's gonna be cut, and then this is the resulting balance. So this is where now Ms. Maestas, um, uh, Board uh, Superintendent, actually, Mundra Groan. You guys have to look at this very carefully and say, by June thirtieth, what are we gonna spend? And what do we need to budget in order to finish spending it in the months of July, August and September? Because this grant actually ends September thirtieth. So the district has to do a final R F R, a request for reimbursement by the end of um, October. If for some reason that got missed, you wouldn't be able to recoup that money. So it's, you know, that's just always where we're at, is trying to make sure that we keep on top of everything. But if you look at this right now, there might be a lot more expenditures, I don't know. But if, let's say, we only thought at this moment, we were gonna spend two million of this. But we still had one million, one twenty nine, six sixty four left, and we're making a good guess. I wouldn't only budget one million, one twenty nine, six sixty four. I would probably budget closer to two million because then I know that I have enough budget authority to finish spending. Um, get what we need, but we also know that at June thirtieth, we have to do a true reconciliation and say, hey, we budgeted two million. But we really only ended up with one million, one twenty nine, so we can only spend one million, one twenty nine. And the reason I say you have to do that is there are a lot of districts that don't do that. And then they're waiting for carryover, like I said, from PED. And let's say that they didn't give it to them in January and they gave it to them in May. You really can't get a lot done in one month that you missed out on a whole year. So basically, that exhibit C is um, just truing up. What your budget was minus all your expenditures that you submitted and were reimbursed for. And then that's what gives you the reduction bar. And so like I showed you, every um, school or the majority of them had reductions, some of them had increases. And um, like I said, I would prefer to have a reduction bar. Because then I know I had full authority to spend since day one, July one. And we weren't waiting for that money uh, for PED to release it, especially if they're behind. And um, they're trying to give the districts their monies quicker because they've had so many complaints about. Especially like last year, here we were at June thirtieth, still trying to spend some grants because we barely got the money. So with that, I'll um, ask if anybody has any questions or if that made sense. Um, and then if you need anything else clarified, did that answer your questions, Ms. Trujillo?
Thank you so much for your explanation and taking the time. Excuse me, taking the time to bring that information. Because just knowing that it was a three year grant. And knowing that uh, that they have, they have to spend it again by September. And so uh, what you're saying is that they need to, now that they're preparing their budget. They need to know what what they're gonna encumber and spend through June thirtieth. Because they're gonna have to make sure that they budget enough money to to put them through September, that will close out the grant. And in excess, what you're saying is in excess of the grant so that they won't shortchange themselves and not be able to spend. Because they wouldn't have budget to make those expenditures, correct?
Exactly, yep, you, that's exactly correct.
But and then after the grant closes in September, and if they have excess budget, then they would decrease that.
Yes.
To be able to reconcile that grant and the budget.
Yes, and PED would only um, reimburse them the amount that was spent. And then they wouldn't allow any more R F Rs.
Okay, well, thank you so much because that was just, I mean, a budget cut of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, just. Just uh, as a budget cut, it just didn't make sense. And I thought, well, where, where is the, what budget is being cut? What can we spend? And uh, and that just left too many questions.
Yeah. Yeah, no, so it's it's not budget cuts, it's just trying to true up the budgets, but. Yeah, but making sure that there's always enough to start the year because um, and I'll give you my example from my um, working with PED and helping them out. I saw so many districts that couldn't do anything because they were waiting for carryover notices. And I talked to so many business managers and so many people and said, always overestimate, they can't tell you, no. All they can say is, is it a reasonable number? And you can say, yeah, it's it's a reasonable number. And you also know that if you budgeted two million, but you only had one, you better only spend one come, you know, that new year. But at least it gives you that initial budget to start out immediately.
But I have another thought because it. But I have another thought because it is a grant. Usually by the end of the year, I, I guess you, you, you have a. You don't have a preliminary and a final budget because by the final budget, you should know the exactly. How much was your expenditure? So then you would budget exactly how much you have to spend through September. And that would balance your budget and balance with the expenditures. So. Kind of budgeting a little over doesn't make sense to me, but again, if that's the way. It guards the budget process. The way, if it, the way it's done in the municipality, I guess it, it works because you do it, but to make your expenditures.
Yeah, the problem is, is um, you'd have to shut your um, purchasing down really early. Um, and really get your directors, your school sites, anybody that's spending any money. You better have your orders in, you better have received everything, and it better. Be enough time to have your AP person pay everything off before June thirtieth. And that never happens. You always have some straggling. I mean. We work really hard to make sure that that's the case and the focus turns from. Um, operational funds, paying those to actually paying your um. Federal grants because your federal grants. You have to get those reimbursed. And you only have one week after June thirtieth to get that submitted. So. You are really trying to get the best and get everything done. The problem is, like I said, is in the past. PED has been really um, behind and giving the numbers. And so here we were last year. I, I mean, I was there. I was working till June thirtieth at, I don't even know, I think it was June twenty-ninth. I don't even remember if we left finally at seven, eight o'clock. I don't remember. And that was kind of early. Um, and maybe I, I don't remember, but we worked our tails off. Trying to get anything and everything and trying to call places because deliveries were just coming in, coming in, coming in. And there we were calling vendors, hey, the order came in. Right now, we need to cut a check today. And so that's where we went. And so. That's the bad part about the way things work. If, if we could truly say. That May thirtieth or May thirty-first was actually June thirtieth. And that's my goal for all my districts usually is. Get the budgets running the right way, get everything spent. I like to have everything spent at least about. For sure, fifty percent by December, but I prefer seventy-five percent and then. Uh, closer to seventy-five percent. And then in that last quarter, hey, we need a few minor things that are needed, but nothing major. Because then you're actually spending within the current and the correct year. Um, you get your monies. Um, everything comes in on time, at least. You're not waiting for vendors. Um. And product was a problem with COVID. That was another issue. Everything's been delayed, you know, with trying to get um, everything in. So just a lot of variables that caused a lot of issues.
So I agree with you in that um. In establishing a cutoff because you can be on June thirtieth trying to pay bills. And uh, I know that at the county, we would have a cutoff in May. And so that uh, there were no POs that were issued. And you, you got your money, you got your invoices sent to be paid so that there can be a reconciled. Uh, budget and uh, expenditures against any grants that were even going to close out on June thirtieth. So, and you're going to have those. We're going to have those in your system. So again, having those done. By the end of May would be something that would, the finance should really, really work on because it's just too stressful. And, and then it won't happen. And so then you can even run the risk of not completing. Getting all the money that you have, that you have in that grant because um. You can't get reimbursed if you don't expend it by June thirtieth. Again, there, like you said, there are too many variables, too many things that can happen at the last minute if they do not plan accordingly. I like the concept of seventy-five percent of the grant being expended way earlier. And then uh, to make sure that, and the, the tail end of the other items, it just depends on the grant, but.
It's minor.
Minor things. And uh, again, the planning is just really, really important. And then to be aware of. Of the structure that finance has to go through to be able to account for these grants and reconcile them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and like I said, for last year, um. PED was, like I said, they gave us our awards in May and June and we. I could have told the directors, sorry, we're not going to buy anything and we're just going to let the money return, but I don't believe in that. Um, I, you know, I know it was difficult on the finance staff, but I told them, I'm sorry, we're. We're allowing them to buy and we're going to do our best to get everything in that we can, which meant we worked hard that last month. Again, it's not planning on the school district's fault. It was um. PED giving us such late notice. So for them giving a carryover notice now in January. Um, if they would finish and get them all out, it would be great, but they haven't yet. So. Here we go again. We're already going to hit March and we still don't have reconciliations on almost all the other funds. So. And again, if we have spending limits that we need to hit so that we don't revert some money. I'm all about letting those program people spend. But I start telling them. Get your stuff together now. Start pre-planning. What do you think you're going to buy? How quick do you think you can make a vendor get it to us? That kind of stuff. And so that's, you know, that's the hard part is schools are so different than anybody else and unique. And. We've just got so many different things going on and um. You know, like I said, I think you had, I counted sixty-two, maybe sixty-six. I can't remember, sixty-two, sixty-six. Uh, funds that have to be run. That's a lot of funds. To be managing and keeping afloat and they all have different uh, requirements. So. Hopefully that answered everybody's questions, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm seeing the photos. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you, guys. Is that it? Okay, great. Thanks. Bye. Good night.
Good night.
Go back to the mid-school presentation and highlight what. They are doing for Flex Fridays. I, I was able to visit them. Um, last week on Flex Friday and not only did you see happy students, but you also saw happy teachers. Who were enjoying what they were teaching. Um, the kind of our student definitely knows, I'm going to say, probably a hundred percent of her students. She knows who's in what class and where they should be. And she's providing opportunities to students. Who may not have normally had some of those opportunities. So. That basketball class that she was talking about, she ensured that those were students who didn't make it on to the basketball team. Um, I saw students in an art class and she let me know that those were students that. Um, weren't able to participate in this autumn's art class. So. I hats off to her and her staff for really knowing her students and what their needs are and ensuring that there's still academic. Learning going on and engagement. I did not see any disciplined referrals or unengaged staff members and. I think that's given to a lot of the problems that she did.
Into this, that we, in the last four weeks, we not had not one referral, not one kid set to the office, not. One kid in the hall when they weren't supposed to on those days. Now on Monday through Thursday, that's a different start. But on Friday, not one single referral. It's made kind of, and this, which is just like everything in the office.
And I think it's a testament to how important it is for our school district to provide enrichment opportunities to our students. And then come to all of the academics and they should be provided with opportunities to choose what they want to do because. They, they chose some pretty awesome uh, classes that they wanted to engage in. Even the Legos class, but you know, there was. Learning going on in that class as well. So hats off to you and your, your staff for doing that. And creating a happy environment for students and teachers. It's wonderful. That's what the cultural sensitivity is all about and SCL for, for the school. Um, yeah.
You know, uh. That's huge that you know the kid's name. That's, that's a game changer. I don't know if it was the last board meeting. Some type of higher ed. When the administrator knows. The first or the last name of a kid. It's everything. That kid is being validated.
Sometimes you know the whole name, first, middle, or passive.
I just wanna, I want to compliment you because it's, I don't know if it was. But you know, a lot of these kids, it's like no one knows the kid's name or all the things. So that kid is coasting through invisible. And so, thank you.
Um, I would just like to highlight that we are expanding our after-school programs at our elementary school sites. Our community school coordinators are helping to facilitate that. Our SEL coordinator is going to communicate with APS. Um, to showcase our SEL program within the district. Um. They're very interested to see what we're doing so that they can take it back over there and um. And replicate it.
Wanted to know who our SEL coordinator was.
My name is, I want to be, and I am a native of Tous. I've been on a long time, but. Graduated, aged myself earlier in nineteen eighty-one from Tous School. And uh, left because of that kind of personal higher education here in Tous. Um, and retired in the last nineteen, thirteen years at Tous for nineteen. I did start in California with public schools. I started teaching kindergarten in Spanish in a small rural country with a school. And I taught within the two years under a grant. It was an urgent grant. That taught everything in Spanish that the same can be made. And then the students were actually, the goal was, these students learn everything in their. Uh, native language in Spanish and then streamline them into a much larger. I worked at the two years in the NAMM and our folks later at the last eighteen winters. As the student services. Came back home, my parents feeded me. I was fortunate enough to come back and realize that. I wanted to get back that community and all of the knowledge. So it's interesting, I'm from Full Circle. Um, where my office currently sits is located. I took the second day, and then said. But then to talk about Full Circle, right? Um, and was fortunate enough, I worked for, you and I, Tous is a local community, they're from New Mexico. And then I spent three years in PNS. Uh, where we went through our. Uh, as a student, uh, senior. Family and new student, we gave four hundred. Uh, cut off the path to high school, we had people being employed high, with the CTE programs. Um, a little bit of everything, PNS, but as we do it, road school, there's a crap. And then I found the opportunity to come back home closer. I hope my parents would look at me. I home. We are fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, whatever it is, or basically during RPS tomorrow. They use this one place sites, a few between the Royals. The people who are getting high school. Um, a lot of communities.
Welcome back.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Also, we have a hat where ladies take that as a group by legislative. Um, down house and we were able to present in front of our legislators, um. In front of the governor, they were invited into her office for that. Uh, Senator Gonzalez did invite them next year to come and do that presentation again, but they were. June eleventh before as a legislator. So we're very proud of them and. Our community school is probably fully procuring existing items for students or, you know, additional supplies of socks. Um, holding all of those necessary items that we don't take. Um, our, when it extends to the board on behalf of our chief secretary. And the IUC, they were very happy that the school board sent um, JJ Consulting to them so that their voice. And they asked me to send that thing from them to use. Our leadership team um, had a training recently on Title Nine with our general counsel. Um, they, they went through the entire process of what that looked like. Uh, Miss Associate Superintendent Kennedy, I was said that of my share of Title Nine coordinator moving forward to the district. Uh, he opened to be provided with additional funding to help on how to support um, any of those investments that we have. Uh, we also had an investigation training with our leadership team. Our general counsel was able to provide step-by-step of what. Investigation should look like for our, our school site. Tomorrow, we'll begin looking at budgets with our staff. Uh, our. Our site administrators provided us with their matrix and student attendance so that we can see what it looks like for. Um, and TEs and staffing needs for this whole district. And then we'll see what their budgets. Look like it again, like I said before, we're not only looking at operational budget work, but we're also looking at all of our funding. Federal funding brands and all of those pieces and how we can help support. Instead of us all working in a silo and only people have one funding source. Uh, there are other funding sources. It's just a matter of us all looking at it creatively. So that's what we do with our.
Coming, I remember it, Susan. Two or three months ago, was that the high school? Was that the administration of the consulting? Oh, the plug.
It was, it was our I. It's a parent community meeting. They get together and you uh, address issues for any of the variable students and. Uh, we also have tribal uh, government. Have those questions asked about.
Was there any idea of how many respondents?
We had, I want to say about fifteen, fifteen.
Followed up, followed by that is our administrator report. I did want to highlight uh, all of the reports are uh. One of the reasons we've been working on, these candidates, and I didn't see them in that elementary school. Um, for their focus on the candidates. Uh, I was asking for, they haven't gone up to me, me that. This is Dr. Ramon. Think on the attendance initiative that we're doing.
First President, the other president of the board and superintendent. Um, we have been working on tier one and tier two attendance, which means tier one students who have missed less than three days. We reinstated our uh, awards this afternoon. We haven't had them in a while. And so I believe that our first nine weeks, we had about forty-seven students that qualified. But we also had some other um, hoops that they had to jump through so they could not be tardy. They could not have any incident reports. So that was also something, even. If they had three days or less, they had to have that criteria. So we had about forty-seven and we handed out um, our certificates. But this last nine weeks, we doubled that. So students really wanted to be recognized. They really wanted that certificate. They really worked hard. Um, we had about a hundred and fifteen qualified, but. Uh, I think in the end, about. Um, we had about a hundred and fifteen qualify, but uh I think in the end about ninety-eight of these students care of certificates. Because some of them were tardy, so now they're working on not being tardy. So our, our school day starts at eight thirty, we give a five minute grace period. And so some of the students, and, and it's unfortunate because it's the parents who drive them, so the parent is late, the child has late, but. You can see them hustling, it's, you know, uh, eight thirty-four and they're just. Cause I greet everybody at the door in the morning and they're just hustling and there's like, I don't wanna get that piece, I wanna get my award. So they're really excited about our initiative. We do have some students that are in the tier three and four level, so. They have missed quite a few days of school, so our attendance coach is calling them, finding out what's going on. Do they need to come on the bus? Do they need to carpool? What's, what's um happening? Have they been sick? If they're sick, um, get us the doctor's excuses, all of those kinds of things and trying to work with those families. Unfortunately, it's a, it's a small amount of, of parents and students, so. Um, they, they want those attendance awards, so that's really helped us in our school.
Well, thank you for focusing on that, and I know that the district as a whole is working on that, and it's really nice to see that aspect of. From our last board meeting, we did highlight some of the things from the board and what have happened. As a candidate saying, unfortunately, I need a lot of time to speak with our native present parents. I hope either the, this period will advocate for their parents to get a story here and about, they'll get their, uh, recognition.
Yes, we hope that too.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
No more, uh, further questions or comments in regards to the administrative report. Our next item is J O Business. Item one is to discuss the purpose of the finance committee and decide whether you should have senior members serve on the entire board. Or, uh, it's a prior board serve. Um, initially, we discussed having the entire board serve, but I kinda had a little bit of a. Kind of going back on that and I'm not sure if we want to convene the whole board or, or the board wants to convene. One of the reasons why I would say maybe not do so is because there's a little bit of work, uh, extra work. There, but we have to uh make notice of these meetings and uh. Ensure that we have a forum, uh, the board is gonna serve as an entirety. Uh, it's always just uh two, uh, four members. Um, we have a little bit more flex abilities and you have to, you don't have to post a possible forum or forums. And if one of our members is unable to attend, uh. Then there's not going to be a forum in presence, so I'm not sure if the board still wants to do an entirety, I mean, I'm more than happy with that, or if we wanted to make. More than serve, we are also providing this, uh, uh. A description of what that, you know, is our package, but you guys will have to read. When it says that each school board shall appoint at least two members of the board and the finance of committee to assist the board in turning out his budget and finance duties. Um, so at least two members, but we can serve as an entirety of support or. Um, I think it's a board, although the higher board be present, I think the board will be more uh involved in the budget process versus two.
She didn't have storage. Uh, but, um, something that she wants to do is, um, it's when there really was. As is the district, to make sure that we're, that's why she's wanted to get this, like, you can pour out up to the rest of the board members, of course. Yes, which is like that. I, I'm not sure if it also could be a subject like. So then we'll, we'll make it a, a regular, uh, piece of the board agenda where the finance, uh, is for the, um, best of the boards.
Especially the board service entirely as finance.
So it's a, for the university, I'm sorry, I started the.
Um, I think so, we started, it was really neat. And, and you have to, because we have two new board members. I think that's mainly just for this one, this one now budget. Because it is gonna be something new also for finance, though they're doing. And, and I think it would just really, only because I think this concern has been about it and I. I think it would just uh be very transparent and very open to see and understand exactly. What is, um, how things well, who does what.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, of course, and then it makes our budget, we need to open the pocket, so it. Uh, obviously, they're probably all, they're all moving in the pocket with this, uh, with Lawrence, Lawrence of Tom's teams. Uh, and obviously, I don't, you know, there's gonna be times where a one board member might not be able to make it. You know, and so you'll have the entire, uh, entirety of the board go for that one. Four members, you know, with this scenario, two more, you would have that. Uh, I agree with that, if you might, I think, you know, most.
Um, I would like to make a motion that, uh, that all the, all the board special member board should participate. As being part of the, uh, the, the finance committee and, uh. And we pray, and, and we would have to do, um. Special working, this is special.
You have a finance.
A finance committee, um, meeting.
So you have a motion outboard and second, a motion, uh, secretary to heal. Have a board entirely serve as the finance committee for this budget cycle, it will be twenty-four, twenty-five, full year. And I hit it all.
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague and President Plonis?
Yes. That's, uh, until we die on day one, uh, day one eight, if finance committee is a board. And it also talks about appointing the chair of the finance committee. Uh, so with that, I would make a motion. If she so accepts a point, Secretary to heal as the chair of the finance committee, which is, uh, experienced in finance.
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague, you have President Plonis?
Yes. So we just find secretary. So the board will serve it as its entirety, as the finance committee and secretary to heal will chair our finance committee. So that, so that, item J one B, which is if finance, you know, fifty-four members, point number, so that, uh. Is not relevant forward, uh, item J, uh, wa, J E. To discuss the purpose of the audit committee and appoint a two volunteer, a board member that's qualified. Uh, so in this instance, we do need to have, uh. Two, uh, volunteer members of the board and, uh. One volunteer member who is a parent of a student, then just serve on the audit committee. And we need one volunteer member who has experience in accounting or financial matters to serve on the audit committee. I do believe in the past, we had our former treasurer, uh. This is like that, so there, sir, um, that, I'm just making a mention of that. I'm not sure if anybody has anybody in mind in regards to be parent, for the student. Or a member of the community. Mr. Hall, would you like to serve on the audit? All right. So, uh, we're looking for a volunteer member of the community, uh. Who has some what experience in accounting or financial matters, um, to be honest, you know. Not everybody has small experience in accounting or financial matters, but we need a member thing with the community to serve on our audit. You don't have. How often is to, you know, it's amazing, uh, once a month. Would you like to, also, thanks, sir. Okay, um, in regards to a, a vol, so we'll make a motion here shortly, in regards to a volunteer member. Who is a parent of a student, tends district to serve on the audit committee, I think will be with our, uh, IT.
Ariana.
Ariana had volunteered, I'm not sure, wanted to appoint her at this time, and then just follow with urgency if she accepts.
She wants to be removed.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so we need to think of a parent, if you know a parent that has moved the district, they may want to serve or. Could follow up to that at our next meeting. Okay, so I will go ahead and, so we have any board members who want to volunteer here, I would sort of volunteer, no other board member going to serve on the audit.
If nobody else.
Want to serve on the audit committee, or never came. Often was made, once. You got to consider the advice. Yeah, I've volunteered also. Oh, I will go ahead and, uh, being that I'm not gonna appoint myself, I would make a motion to, uh, appoint. Two members of the board on the audit.
Those two members.
I was not gonna, second, so we have a motion, uh, so Vice President Cynthia to appoint, uh, myself. And Secretary to hold the audit. We have a second from, uh. Board member.
Member P?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague?
Yes.
President Plonis?
Yes. Okay, so I would like to make a motion table to aid the appointment of one volunteer member. Who is a parent of a student, depending if you serve on the audit committee or the committee. And then make it, uh, a seat out of that member. So again. We have a second for Vice President Cynthia to table, the volunteer member of assistant appointment for the next meeting.
Number King?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague?
Yes.
President Plonis?
They have been, uh. Seizing out a volunteer, a community member. Serve on the audit committee, I would like to appoint Mr. Stevens Hall as their community member. To serve on the audit committee in regards to the financial matters of this ring. That was second.
Number King?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague?
Yes.
President Plonis?
Yes. Congratulations. It's your email, um, F. You like to spell, uh, F. Hank Smith.
F Hank Smith.
Or at gmail dot com. So it's F. Hank, B A N K, B A N K, Smith, that's a M I T. A Gmail, a Gmail. So we got that. Yeah, I'll, I'll return it, I'll return. Okay, so moving along to, uh, item J three, I actually, uh, the fourth. In reviewing, we didn't, we, uh, hoping to make that. Uh, so please advise it, uh, but the future candidate, one, I will make a motion to table. The approval of the Jaws Ministry Schools or Education will send me a resolution until the next meeting, so we can, uh, check regularly. We have a second from.
Number King?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague?
Yes.
President Plonis?
Yes.
So, um, moving along to item four, it's discuss the possible points volunteer board members for the. Budget meeting, which is not gonna.
So is Canada, what is the budget meeting, but you're not part of, uh, our budget meetings that we're. Um, two board members that can attend the budget meeting, which is separate from the finance meeting, which is looking over all of the finances. The budget meeting will be of the districts and the budget for the sport.
Vice President Cynthia, former King.
I would mind, except. I am a student.
Um, you reappoint yourself in the form of a team.
But also, what?
Then we're in hilarious.
Right, okay. So yes, I would be.
I would like to make a motion to appoint, uh. And with all respect to, uh, Benjamin Portchop, who is not here and discussed agenda, those, we just, or, uh, we will go in. And, uh, he could be, uh, some of the people talking about it or talking about that. But moving forward, I'll make a motion to appoint a board member, please, Vice President Cynthia. Represent the board as members of the budget meeting. Again, second. Second, please, uh, I think of the role.
Number King?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague?
Yes.
President Plonis?
Yes. Uh, maybe, and so obviously include, uh. If, uh, member Portchop, so like, I'm sure the person who made you age to their bed to that. But they couldn't have had another view with the motion and the vote. So at, over one of our previous meetings, we did appoint for the record, uh, so we don't have to, uh, make a. Another, another motion, we did appoint four member teams and, uh. Vice President Cynthia to serve on the Harvard Art Collection committee. Along with a community member, uh, ex-board member, Winkler there. Make a motion.
Just program, yeah, anyway, just to.
That's okay. Yes. It's, uh, great, I would want to make a motion to appoint, uh, board member King and Vice President Cynthia. To serve on the Harvard Art Collection as representative of the board. And to include, uh, former board member, Winkler, as a, uh, community member. Who also serve on the Harvard Art Collection. And again, a second.
A second.
They have a second, we have Secretary to heal. Can we please, uh, have a moment?
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague?
Yes.
President Plonis?
Yes. Item A, the biggest, A one, a P O D L, for access construction, it's wide. This is, uh, Melissa Eager, our director of the federal programs. Yeah. Thank you, Bruce, for helping it out.
For, uh, members of the board to present their, their golden. I have for you, for, for Hubo, if you'd like to purchase. New Dell computers for all of our students, they raise three twelve, but that's a funny. It, it's eight, eight gigabytes, so these would be an upgrade for the, from the old computers, our old phone books are only four gigabytes. This gives us more space to store apps, particularly some of the apps that are robotics. Um, instructors are asking for, but will help support some of the other ones that we're going to be sending.
Um instructors are asking for, but will help support some of the other ones that we're going to be spending. Uh the last thing we got from books were was in twenty nineteen. The life expectancy is about four years, so these S R funds would really support our efforts. With our students, and we could use these metal ones. Uh for this purpose and then free up some of our.
So Vice President.
What do we do with our old? So our old ones are sold to a C S vendor called Total Technology, and they give us some money back, but it's not, it's. According to money, that's not substantial, but we can get some money back. If they didn't read, they wouldn't read them. What happens to them?
Uh if I may speak, uh President Flott, Vice President Sprague, uh usually what we do is the Chromebooks are um. And members of the board, I'm sorry, and superintendent, when they're gone, uh usually by the time it's, so Chromebooks are in a four-year refresh program. Um and usually by the time the four years is up, uh you're gonna encounter lots of software um. Uh issues with that, so uh it's best that we go ahead and sell them to the only C S vendor in New Mexico, which is Total Technology. Get some of our money back uh versus not getting anything back. Go ahead, Mr. King.
What is some, just ballpark, what is?
You know what, I've never gotten, I have not yet gotten a um a quote yet on the Chromebooks. Uh but the MacBooks that we did uh sell at one time to Total Technology. Um sometimes depending, so they did an A through F grading system. A that the the system, it looks good, it's uh we can go ahead and resell, refurbish it, get it out. F is like, F is it's fried, it's not going anywhere. So once um so we pack up the Chromebooks, we send them out, they go ahead and give us an uh that grading scale. But I'm assuming being that we spent anywhere between three fifty, three hundred and fifty dollars to about four eighteen. I assume that the return back maybe twenty forty dollars per device. Um the MacBooks were maybe a few hundred bucks that we would get, so. Uh the Macs were eight years old though versus four years old, the life expectancy of a MacBook. Uh is around eight to ten years, however, with all the software and the requirements that we do uh for the I O uh. For the updating of the I O S system, um they are not uh. Canvas sometimes can't do those proper updates, so that's why the MacBooks and also the kids don't take the best care of them as well. So I'm expecting, hopefully, you know, if we're lucky, maybe forty fifty bucks on the Chromebooks. They uh all the uh devices that we do have now have uh the accidental damage, so. Most of the devices that come in, if they've been damaged, we send them in for replacement anyways. Uh for replacement repairs, uh we do pay extra for the three-year accidental damage. Um we see a lot of accidental stuff. From the kids, lot, I mean, we receive, uh it's a it's a daily thing, we receive quite a bit, so that accidental uh coverage is huge. So but the returns, uh because we send them out so much, I expect probably to get at least a B grade. I would hope, depending on the kids aren't, you know, scratching and writing into them.
Your number here?
Uh yeah, so uh this one on this quote that we got, we get directly from Dell, it's uh on our statewide price agreement um. With the G S D, we're looking about three eighty per Chromebook, and I'm looking maybe so uh, sometimes I see that fluctuate. Uh to about four eighteen, so this is the most uh current um quote that we have from Dell. And so that comes also with uh the white glove, which is uh I do some backend stuff so that it's automatically able to get onto our network with the um. Uh it also uh puts all my licenses into the Google Chrome accounts. And uh the act, like I said, the accidental uh coverage. Uh now with the eight gigabytes, that's really important because uh it does support a lot of the programs like the robotics. But also um I get a lot of requests even from my our special ed departments, we had a student that was working on. Uh wanted to do a project and needed this music app, so we kind of customize it to uh what the different departments need.
That's a great answer, um. Here uh this is. It doesn't mean. It's not really. We're definitely putting in our revenue base in regards to people Dell phone for access to. Then in, I would make a motion to. Uh search this Dell phone votes. For this provide, you see it about like five hundred and two thousand, three hundred and five dollars. Five hundred and Cynthia, the role of.
Number K?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague?
Yes.
President Flott?
Yes. That's what we. Uh Al, Al, item Al, Cynthia, we get tables, uh items students. Probably except agenda, so we have Al one, A. B, and Al two. On the. Minutes. Any question from the board regarding the. Are you not uh? Are you fully making a motion to approve? Uh the concept agenda as its entirety to approve Al one, A, B, and B, and Al two, A. Here's a second. A second from Vice President Cynthia.
Number K?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague? President Flott?
Yes.
Item M, of coming using of agenda items, M one, three processes. Um you want to. The uh supporting member of the Zellin Center. Who is a parent of a student from the district that projects um. Uh meetings, and then the board would like to uh. Be like uh anything that's. This time. There is uh. Excuse me, yes. President, are we, are we working on the housing? Are we gonna get that?
I had. I had, yes, I gave. I have coffee. We do have a coffee.
So we need a. Entertaining, entertaining uh. Entertaining on agenda purposes, with possible destruction of. Account, we have six, uh whole group. At the next meeting. Corporate to the idol. Presenting it not, uh that would be. Uh number uh Vice President.
Thank you. Um I would like to keep on our radar.
Yeah, that was. I like this.
Thank you.
Those are all the tentative agenda items, so we'll uh. Look at the next, get that when it comes up and uh. As president, I'll do my best to work with pretending to make sure we can include those topics. Okay, item M, uh two is uh holding retreat. Is scheduled for March ninth, twenty twenty four at House Administration. Or is it? So from nine o'clock to three o'clock, we have a treat on March ninth, twenty twenty four, is open to the public. At the weekend. Yes, or the board will be getting uh. Training and a district discussion. Place. Um and three is our next regular board meeting, March twentieth, twenty four, at a Nazi charter charter school. I would just like to uh uh note to the board that we are, we be visiting another uh. School site, the Nazi charter school, so I did really want to try to. See the agenda uh kind of short, so we're not asking them. Too much, but then again. What is.
Yes.
Okay, item N is adjournment, some of the adjournments. Second from Vice President Cynthia.
Number K?
Yes.
Secretary to heal?
Cynthia. Secretary to heal.
Secretary to heal?
Call for votes.
Secretary to heal?
If they do, they will call.
Yes. Vice President Sprague?
Yeah.
President Flott?
Yes. Yeah, it was very thoughtful.
Very.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
They didn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
How is it here, man?
Oh, I know you like.